Welcome all to the Pembroke Pines City Commission meeting of June 18, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Good.
I am here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Mayor Castillo.
Here.
City Manager Dodge.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
I'm here.
We have a call room.
Today, the the National Anthem will be sung by Elena and, or played by Elena and Mina Riker. They are homeschooled and their mom is here, Karen Riker. Will everyone please stand for the pledge and remain standing for the National Anthem? Ladies, when you're ready. Whenever you're ready. Wow. Beautiful. Thank you very much. Boy, I could listen to that all night. Beautiful. Thank you so very, very much. Announcements of items to be pulled from the agenda?
Mayor, item 10 and item 27 are pulled from the agenda.
Hold on. 10 and 27. Okay. Presentations. We have first up is State Representative Robin Barnum, who present a legislative update to the city of Pembroke Pines. We welcome you, Robin, for, and thank you for everything that you do for the city of Pembroke Pines. You're outstanding. Please, the floor is yours. There's a button there that says speak.
Thank you. And for people at home, I just had some dental surgery.
Ah.
So half my face is numb, so I will not be smiling and I'll be opening my mouth very little, but everyone can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't want to postpone this. First, I want to congratulate Mayor Castillo again. I've been to your town halls and they're incredibly informative. And really, you're energizing the Pembroke Pines residents to get involved. I want to also thank Commissioner Hernandez. Thank you. I've already got people I'm sending to you for help. You've been very responsive. And of course, Commissioner Rodriguez, you, since you were all kind of elected in the same couple of weeks, I haven't had time to extend my congratulations. So I'm really happy to be here and I'm going to go over a legislative update real quick. But before I do, I need to talk about your law enforcement department. I went on my first ride along in Pembroke Pines. And I rode along with Officers Sprout and I actually made the whole shift. I did the whole shift. I was like, I'm going to do this. And I have never seen such professionalism. This community is in such good hands. The chief, the assistant chief of actress who helped facilitate this, this department and what they do for people. And I'm going to tell you, it was scary at times for me when you're out 11 o'clock at night and you're pulling over a car on a dark street and you don't know who that is. You know, they always say you should walk in somebody else's shoes. Well, I walked in those shoes for eight hours. And I can tell you without a doubt that the heroes these men and women are and what they do every day on the streets to keep us safe. We had a situation where we thought there was a break-in with a young, a young child is home alone. This, they, they came around, the way they back up each other, the way they care about these residents. I, it was, it was, I'm in awe. So I just want to thank the chief, the assistant chief. I want to thank Officer Sprout, he's amazing. And I think the people of Pembroke Pines seem to know that the men and women on this street, the streets really care. And I saw them, the most important thing I saw was a situation that could have gotten ugly. Where it could have ended up on TV, where you see things where things can happen. And they de-escalated that situation and took care of everything. It was, it was like an example. I wish somebody did have a video of it because maybe somebody does on their chest. But if you watch the de-escalation strategies they use and turn the situation that could have blown up into something that worked out and getting people the help they needed, I just cannot say enough. So thank you again to Pembroke Pines. Okay, so I had a very successful session. As you all know, I, I always put people above politics. So in my four years here, I've been able to pass 12 bills, which is kind of unheard of for somebody in the minority party. That's because my bills make sense. So this year, the one bill I just got recognized by the fire chiefs for this bill and I won a statewide award is for blue lights on fire trucks. And I've kind of been talking to you about it and I'm going to let Commissioner Rodriguez, because she's working with me on this. Every first responder deserves to come home to their families, every first responder. We know that blue lights are better at night, red lights are better in the day. The state of Florida prohibits blue lights from being on any fire trucks, only law enforcement. 28 states in the United States, based on national studies, have already switched all of their fire trucks to blue lights. We have never been able to do this in seven years. People have been trying to do some form of the bill. I reached out to Sheriff Gualtieri. I reached a compromised position. I reached out to Sheriff Gualtieri. I reached a compromised position with the Sheriff's Association. And for the first time in seven years, we are going to be able to have blue lights on the back of their fire trucks. So it's a really big deal because these men and women behind me, they deserve to come home. And we know that people run into fire trucks. And not only that, when they're on those streets, they're protecting the other first responders who are on the scene. So I'm very proud to have passed that bill. Another bill that I, that passed that went into a package had to do with lethality assessments. And this is something your law enforcement officers are going to have to be trained in. So everyone knows the story of Gabby Petito. We know that her fiance was, he was assaulting her. It was domestic violence. An officer pulled them over and released them. A lethality assessment was not used in the state of Utah at that time. We now know that there are lethality assessments, which is an evidence-based tool that can be utilized by the officer to evaluate the situation and link the person to resources. In Maryland, there was a longitudinal study with lethality assessments and it decreased domestic violence murders by 30%. Because the tool lets them know just how much danger that person was in. So I ran this bill with, with State Rep Baker. We had Aaron Graul in the Senate. We could not get it on the floor in time, but luckily I have a great friend and Representative Dana Travolci. And she took our entire bill and amended it onto her bill. So we do now have, signed by the governor, lethality assessments in the state of Florida. The other bill that I also got into a package is has to do with mobile response teams. If you're unfamiliar with mobile response teams, they're a group of professionals that go out to a crisis situation. They're mental health professionals. They de-escalate that situation. They get those people resources. It, it, it stops people who shouldn't be criminalized because of mental health from going into the justice system. It helps with Baker Act situations because Baker Act is a temporary six and then they're released and there is no mandatory follow-up. So this is the way to wrap around the services and different cities are getting grants from it. So the language that increases the funding drawdown from the federal government, that was in my bill with Senator Harrell, was actually placed in the Live Healthy Act, which is an easier way to get the bill passed because the Live Healthy Act was a priority. So that bill also reached the finish line. And so now we're going to have more mental, now we have mobile response teams out there. We're going to have more money to create more teams to deal with the mental health crisis that exists in the state of Florida. For the people out there watching, I know that Angela looks very closely at the condos in the community as all of you do. We have the My Safe Florida Home Condo Project. This is a pilot program. We know that we give, and for anyone watching, you need to sign up now for My Safe Florida Home. If you need a roof, if you need windows hardened, go to mystafeleitorhome.com and sign up before the money runs out. You will get $10,000 towards a roof hardening, a new roof, or $10,000 towards windows. If you already have shutters, you already have the hardening, so they're not going to give you the windows. Also, do not sign a contract before you get the grant because you can only use the people that are on the list. So if you sign a contract, even if they're on the list before your grant is authorized, you're going to be denied the grant. So make sure that you go out and you take advantage of this because the legislature and leadership in the legislature has done nothing to help with the insurance crisis as evidenced by the fact that we are all suffering and I have not seen my insurance bill go down, neither have any of you, and it keeps getting worse. Yet we keep passing all these bills that don't provide any consumer relief to any of us. And as a matter of fact, this past legislative cycle, you have a policy that you're paying through the nose for that you will never be able to use because they have given all your rights away. You are no longer allowed to recover attorney fees or expert fees. So if you want to file against your insurance company, which all of us have done, and you know it's a fight because they have deep pockets, you are out of pocket for all of those expenses without a reimbursement. Also, we know that there are issues with the commissioner of insurance. For 10 years, we did not have a storm. What were the insurance companies doing those 10 years? What were they doing? They weren't saving money. They weren't doing anything. So we had a bill to elect the insurance commissioner. Can you imagine if the person running insurance in the state of Florida had to be accountable to everybody in this room? We would absolutely have different results. So those things were not heard. Also, what I'm working for with Pembroke Pines is the replacement cost value. I've been working on this for three years. And that is that if the cost to replace your home in a storm is more than $700,000, not how much it costs for the home, then you are not allowed to be on citizens' policy insurance if you live in Broward County. However, if you live in Dade, you can. If you live in Monroe, you can, but no other county is entitled to that. I have had people call you from Pines. They had to take an insurance of last resort. Their insurance went from $8,000 to $38,000 a year. People cannot stomach that. We finally got it through. I'm working with Kim Barfield. It's bipartisan legislation. We almost got it on a package. There are people who want to depopulate citizens, but they took off, but we're not done. We're going again next year because people can't afford insurance. And if you have to take an insurance of last resort, you're going to have a problem. And for anyone in Pembroke Pines who has a non-homesteaded property, this is very important. This bill was signed by the governor. And you have citizens and it is a non-homesteaded property, they are going to be able to push you into a surplus line carrier, which is the insurance of last resort. That is going to impact everyone in Pembroke Pines who is renting because the insurance for that landlord is going to go through the roof on that non-homesteaded property. So that's, if they have citizens, citizens will depopulate them. The My Safe Florida Condo Project, we've given all the information to the condos. We're working on getting a meeting together so that they can harden their buildings. The last couple of bills I just want to go over for the, for the parents in the room. Pay attention, the Supreme Court is hearing a case that is going to impact the social media bill that was passed this year. What that means is that if this bill stays, your children, if they are 13 or 14, are not going to be able to go on platforms, print social media platforms that have targeting, that, you know, they, they go in and calculate what your kids are looking at, like makes them go down a deep hole. The reason for this bill is because we know that predators use these social media sites to exploit children. We know that happens. They use it for sex trafficking. And we know there's a mental health problem and what happens with the bullying on these sites. So the bill was passed. So 13 and 14-year-olds will not be allowed on Instagram or TikTok and things like that. So to the parents who don't like to say no, you can blame the state legislature if this bill stays. And then if you're 15, if you're 15, you're going to have to have parent permission to get on. Nobody has any idea how this is going to be rolled out because they're waiting for the Supreme Court decision and it's up to these providers, the social media providers, to create what we put in law. Also, Southwest Broward has the highest number of tickets regard to the road racing. I don't know, my, the intersection where I live, we've had it shut down at two in the morning because kids go out. They do donut hold. They, they sit on the windows of the cars. It's like a, like a sport for them. So now we've increased the penalties for them. They are no longer allowed to do that. They'll be increased. They were never allowed to do that, but now there are going to be increased penalties for the drivers. There's also going to be the ability for law enforcement to impound your car. So for the parents out there who have their kids going out in the car doing this, your car is going to get impounded. And for all the parents who think they can breathe a sigh of relief, my kid doesn't drive, spectators have an increased penalty. So that means when law enforcement goes out to these scenes, they have a lot of tools in their pocket now to deter this from happening, but parents need to be aware because these are not people from outside communities coming and doing this in most cases. These are teenagers who live in our neighborhoods. So parents need to have a serious discussion with them about what's going to happen if they get caught doing this. As usual, we have passed numerous bills that I fought against, filed amendments against that will take away your local control. I want to thank Sam Goran, Charlie Dodge, and Mayor Castillo and Commissioner Good and Commissioner Schwartz for this session. When I called everybody and I was like, this bill is going to hurt Pembroke Pines. They were able to recite, I would call Sam, I'd be like, what is this going to do to Pines, Sam? Tell me. What, and so they are always on the feedal. If I call them at 7:00 AM in the morning, Sam answers because he knows I have a committee meeting at 8:30. So all of those bills have passed. He also has the development bill with the impact fees on his desk right now, which will impact you as well. We're waiting to see if he's going to sign that. So a lot of things to take away your local control. And just for the people out there, this is a very important issue that everyone has to pay attention to because you elect these people up here because you trust them. Yet the state continuously takes away their ability to make decisions. And that's a huge problem. You voted for Mayor Castillo because you know he can do the job. If he wanted to say, we're going to do this with recycling or we're going to do this with the incinerator, there are laws that will preempt him from doing that. If you wanted to pass an ordinance even now, that if you work in Pembroke Pines in 104-degree heat and you have a mandate that people have to give water to their employees, you're not even allowed to give water because the state has preempted you from creating any policies that would mandate you to say you have to give the residents and workers in Pembroke Pines water. So it's very dangerous. And the other thing they did is they're taking away your ability to tax. Now, I, I've met with all of the, the police unions and many of the first responders. This is going to be a big deal for you guys because they say, oh, you don't want to tax the residents, but you pay your law enforcement officers and your firefighters with your local municipal taxes. So the more they keep strangling you and strangling your ability to, to collect or, you know, tell you, you can't do this, who's paying these people? Who? So I've put them all on notice. They need to pay attention to this. Because one thing that everyone loves about Pines, because Commissioner Castillo goes to every person in the audience, what do you love about Pines? The people, the park, the streets, and that they feel safe and part of a community. If you can't deliver that for people because we're preempting you from getting the job done, that's going to be a problem. Know that I am a home rule hero for League of Cities four years in a row and I will continue to fight for you. And I also want to introduce Brianna Velez. She is my new legislative aide, everybody. She's brand new, first job. Se habla español perfecto. So when you call my office, you will have my broken Spanish or you will also have Brianna because I know I'm trying to make sure that we can reach out to everybody. So I hope I didn't take too long. Anyone who turned in late, this is dental surgery, just ignore it. I love serving you. Call me with anything. My phone number is 954-668-3662. People call me all day, every day. People are, I know we had homeschool parents. We, I had parents calling me who were having issues with getting their voucher money. If they're, they can't get their parent or have a Medicaid issue, you call me, insurance issue, you call me. When everyone got thrown off, citizens, I actually had citizens come down from Tallahassee to my office meet from residents all over District 103, face to face, so they weren't on 100 phone calls to get help as to what to do. So I, I'm just so proud of this commission. I'm so proud of the city. Sam, you get big suyas for all the seven o'clock in the morning calls. Thank you very much. And it's an honor to serve you all. And I'll let Maria speak to what she's going to do with the blue lights though. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for everything that you do.
Thank you.
And for all the leadership that you provide to us and the friendship that you've always had with the city of Pembroke Pines.
Thank you.
We very, very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
No, I had just simply brought it up to the commission when you talked to me about it, right after you came back from sessions. Just a thank you to you and we'll make sure that our fire department takes full advantage of that safety measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez. Mayor, I love your town hall meetings. Thank you. And to all the men and women back there keeping us safe, thank you. I'm riding along with the fire department next. So thank you, guys.
Good, good, good. Anyone else? Okay, thanks again. State Representative Robin Barnum. Doing a great job. Presentations. The fire department will present the Phoenix Award.
Evening. Mr. Rodriguez, sorry, chief. So we're here today to present Chalk Zimbalist with the Fire Department's Phoenix Award and to publicly recognize him for his actions that resulted in saving someone's life. The Phoenix Award is the highest recognition that is issued by the fire department to a civilian that has displayed courage and selflessness. And on May 1st, 2024, Mr. Zimbalist did just that. I want to ask Kim and his family to join me. Before I turn it over to you, Chalk, I just want to give everyone a summary of the events that took place and then you could just fill in the blanks. Mrs. Zimbalist is a Pembroke Pines resident that previously worked for the city of Hollywood as a police officer. Him and his wife were dining on vacation in Budapest. And while he was dining, he recognized or realized that someone was choking and was having difficulty breathing. He went over there and performed the Heimlich maneuver. Soon after, after several attempts, the object was dislodged or the food was dislodged and the person immediately felt some relief. His decisive actions resulted in a lifesaving outcome. So for that, we congratulate, we congratulate you. But before we move on, we have a special and a surprise guest that will be presenting the Phoenix Award on behalf of the city and the fire department. Mr. David Peach is here. Will you and your wife make it down, please? If I may, David Peach is the survivor that was also on vacation in Budapest at, at the time and has traveled from Massachusetts to be with us today to help us recognize Mr. Zimbalist. So thank you very much for making it. And again, Chalk, we're honored to provide you with this, with this award. And then thank you for just being a good person and responding like you did. Because of your actions, someone who's going to spend another Christmas, another birthday with their families, and that's incredibly important, the impact that, that you've had. So I want to turn it over to you, Mr. Chalk. Maybe you want to say a few words?
First of all.
Pictures from them on vacation.
First of all, I just want to thank God that I was able to have had training and be in a position because actually we were paying the bill and looking at social media and we were about to walk out of the restaurant when this happened. And I just heard it and I just reacted. And it was just, I didn't think, I just reacted and prior training came in hand. And I'm so proud, so surprised to see you here again. And I know we were following you on the end of your trip, but my wife and I, we are very appreciative to you. And thank you to the fire department and the city of Pembroke Pines for your service and thank you for this award.
Well. Well. Well, now they, now they get to go out to dinner again.
Yeah.
But we're going to do it right. Do you have some words that you'd like to share?
I would love to share. You know, we traveled from, actually from New York today to come here. And it was April 21st of this year, we were in Budapest on vacation having dinner at a very well-recommended restaurant. Of course, they were there, so it had to be recommended, you know, and on the list. And I was enjoying my dinner and started to cough. And I do this periodically. I just have some trouble swallowing, I guess. My wife says to me, are you okay? And of course I say, okay. Then I realize I'm not and I do this, which I know is universal, and I'm shushing my head. After 40 years in healthcare and numerous CPR courses myself, I just should have known to get up and throw myself on the back of the chair. But who thinks of that when you're in gasping for breath? Thing I remember the most, I think, was the noise I was making, that gurgling sound that you were recognized, I think, first. And and, you know, how it was disturbing the other people in the restaurant. The violin player came over and I was told, kind of pounded on my back a little bit. I don't need to be called there. And then the hero arrived and he yelled at me, stand up. Who could stand up? I'm trying to breathe. And he grabs me in the arms, pulls my weight up, dead weight. And I don't know, three, two, three, four plunges into my kite belly. I expelled what proves to be, I think, a noodle, believe. I expelled what proves to be, I think, a noodle, believe it or not. It wasn't anything, anything terrible. And after a while of getting my composure back, we went over and chatted a bit. And then, at the end of the meal, we really got to chat, I think, really ignoring the person at the table next to us, because we were really talking a lot. The women exchanged their WhatsApp information, pictures were taken, as you could see around the room here. And then came the bill. And I tried to pay it, but the waitress said, no, somebody else offered to pay it already. And there had been a group of Americans sitting next to us, celebrating something. And basically, I said, no, this is my bill, you know. So afterwards, it, then that worked out. But on the way home, as we're walking back to the hotel, I began to wonder, you know, what's a person's life worth? You know, it's certainly more than a hundred dollar dinner.
More than a hundred dollar dinner.
And I think, you know, it came up that the respect of this man is what my life is worth. I owe him my respect, and that's why we're here today. I couldn't, I wouldn't be here without him. And, you know, I am just so thankful that I was in the right place at the right time, as they were, and knowing what was happening, knowing what to do and how to do it. So, and it's such an easy procedure. I think I Googled something, there were like over 5,000 deaths a year from simple choking that could be saved. So, Chalk, I just want to say thank you again. Sure, thank you for being there. You, the, the two of you somehow turned, what could have been a terrible evening, into a fun time, and a, you know, communication that has been developing. And I'm surprised you showed up, you're always trapping somebody.
But leaving tomorrow.
So, you know, now a pretty important man, right? So I don't know if it's you, or if it's the issues that I asked, but.
That you're going to have to pay. Congratulations. All the best to you. Fantastic. Well done. Well done. Everybody is. Chief, do you want to try it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, one would be your sir. I think there are two candidates that didn't have it back and forth, because you would be getting an award, your citation, you have to picture the case.
Okay, thank you very much, and congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something real quick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to say something to Ms. Ms. Chalk. So I, I got to say that this was God's will that brought you two together. It was God's will that you saved his life. Thank you for knowing what to do, and thank you for making City of Pembroke Pines very proud of what you know what to do. Thank you, sir.
Chief?
So in closing, and I just want to remind everyone that this incident or this event reminds us how important it is to learn CPR. And remind those that are watching and those that are here present that the fire department offers free CPR classes every month. Up there, you could see the schedule for July and August, and you could follow us at any one of those social media accounts for more information, or the city's website to sign up for a CPR class. So I encourage everyone to do so.
Thank you so very much for everything you do. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, this is the proclamation to the Recreation and Cultural Arts Department, recognizing July 2024 as National Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Pembroke Pines. Commissioner Schwartz, will you join me, please? This is the proclamation of the City of Pembroke Pines National Park and Recreation Month, where as parks and recreation are integral part of the community throughout this country, including the City of Pembroke Pines, to promote health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas parks and recreation encourage physical activities by providing space for popular sports, walking paths, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles.
Parks and recreation are fundamental to the envi, to the environmental well-being of our community, and our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. It's not on the, the proclamation, but we have to go promote our 196 Wilderness and Bird Sanctuary. It's just absolutely awesome. Go see it this summer.
Good. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives that have designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, now therefore, I Angelo Castillo, Mayor of the City of Pembroke Pines, along with the City Commission, do hereby recognize 2024 as National Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Pembroke Pines. Christina, well done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This month, in July, we have on our website, we invite you to come to our parks. We've put a calendar in on every single day of the month, we invite you to come to a park, and maybe it's an event that we have staffed, or if it's just introducing you to a new park that maybe you don't know about in our city. But we encourage you to check it out, and if you need more information, it's on the website. So enjoy the summer.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Commissioner, if you could stay with me, please. Yeah. Yeah. The proclamation of the City of Pembroke Pines Sheikh Sharifat Mohammed. Commissioner, would you read, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm accepting the proclamation on behalf of the family. Whereas Sheikh Safiyat Mohammed was born in Trinidad and Tobago of East Indian descent. At the age of 16 years old, he attended a religious university in India to pursue his studies in the Islamic religion. And whereas after graduation, Sheikh Safiyat Mohammed married Shinaz in India and returned to Trinidad and Tobago. Safiyat and Shinaz have six children, three sons and three daughters, Fazia, Azra, Faria, Angar, Kizar, and Yameth. And whereas more than 30 years ago, Sheikh Safiyat Mohammed came to the United States after an interview with Azad Ali, hired him to manage, teach, and deliver sermons to then newly formed Darul Alum Institute, meaning House of Knowledge, based in the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida. And whereas Sheikh Safiyat Mohammed's vision in the institute expanded the institute's reputation worldwide through printed magazines, travel, and visual media. He was involved in the interfaith organization in Hollywood and participated in many well-attended projects and other religious leaders for the next several decades. And whereas Governor Jeb Bush requested Sheikh Safiyat to be the first Muslim to lead prayer on the House floor in Tallahassee. And whereas, after 9/11, Sheikh Safiyat traveled the United States after requesting the Department of Justice to train law enforcement on how to recognize and prevent threats to our nation. And whereas in June 2015, Sheikh Safiyat was introduced to Commissioner Jay Schwartz, the two formed a very close relationship to build a bridge towards humanity in our community by holding interfaith events throughout South Florida, to include iftar dinners, Ramadan celebrations, Eid celebrations, as well as having annual City of Pembroke Pines Proclamations for the Muslim community. And whereas Sheikh Safiyat has served with Rabbi Mordecai as co-chair for the City of Pembroke Pines Interfaith Council. And whereas Sheikh Safiyat's sudden and recent passing, on June 8th, 2024, at the age of 65, has impacted the local community and other communities based in the United States and worldwide. More than 3,000 people from various states and foreign countries attended his janazah, a funeral. And whereas Sheikh Safiyat's life work to teach people about Islam and the Quran included educating the public that to be a Muslim, you must accept all religions. We are all a part of the base of the tree that branches out towards peace and harmony. Now therefore.
I Angelo Castillo, Mayor of the City of Pembroke Pines, in recognition of the profound work Sheikh Safiyat Mohammed has done on behalf of our community, the City of Pembroke Pines Commission expresses our deepest gratitude for his committed, commitment to a world of peace, love, and respect, and for all walks of life. He will be greatly missed. A moment of silence, please. Thank you, Commissioner. Will Principal Bayer please join me? Yeah. This is the presentation. By Principal Peter Bayer will announce the dedication of a classroom, Room M101, at the Academic Village Campus in honor of Lorraine Vasquez, who unexpectedly passed away. Lorraine was the art teacher there for 24 years and a part of the founding faculty that opened the Academic Village Campus. Principal Bayer?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm here tonight with Lorraine's husband, Lenny. Thanks, Leo, Lenny. And to honor Lorraine, when we first opened the Academic Village in 2000, 24 years ago, Lorraine was our art teacher. She took the job actually before the buildings were, were complete. It was July of 2000. She was two months out of FIU. She was 23 years old. And she worked for us for 24 years in that same classroom. Nobody's ever been in that classroom as a teacher other than Lorraine. And she died suddenly this year of a ruptured brain aneurysm, and the entire community felt it in, in a terrible way. And there's so little that you can do, but the mayor immediately reached out and suggested we name the classroom after her, having it been her classroom. And she literally grew up there. From 23, she got married, she had kids, she raised her kids, her kids now go to our school at the Academic Village. So she's tremendously missed, and this is just such a nice gesture to help us all heal over at Pembroke Pines Charter. So thank you, Mayor.
City Attorney, if you could, please bring a resolution to our next city commission meeting so that we can do this officially. And sir, our hearts go out to you and your family, and we want you, we just want you to know that you will always be family to us. And if there's anything we can do, in fact, think of a way. And we will be there for you. A moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, and God bless. Okay. This is a presentation by Stella Toko will provide a presentation on the results of the Veteran Friendly City Pilot Program.
Don't say that, doesn't it? Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager staff. Very happy to be with you this evening to congratulate you as a veteran-friendly city officially. We just launched one year ago a pilot program, and you graciously gave us the platform. Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz, for bringing that item forward. And you accepted the challenge. I'm a little emotional, because I'm always a vet. And this was a brainchild while I was on the board of Mission United. Just to recognize that our veterans are present. Not only do they live, they work within our cities. And so the Veteran Friendly City was set up to go grassroots and take care of our veterans. They're in constant transition. And so immediately, Assistant City Managers Thorinson and Stam jumped to the cause. Closely behind them was Community Services Director Jay Schecter, and we went to work. And before you, in the backup, I'm not going to read it all, it's a 20-page backup on where we find ourselves today. There were four objectives, and for the sake of the community, allow me to just to mention those four objectives. They were to identify the population that lives within city limits, identify the veteran-owned businesses that are within your city, identify and calculate the veteran businesses that are hiring veterans. And then lastly, the fourth one was to work with the city to come up with a plan that would be a constant outreach to this demographic once those, those people and those things were identified. So with that in mind, the Chamber of Commerce has started a veteran committee to reach out to the businesses. And they, in the middle of all this, they come alongside us, and they became part of the strategic plan. So in front of you this evening, let me just bring your attention to a couple of things. And those four items that we just mentioned are in your packet, and the date, the status of where that particular item, that goal is, and some notes are alongside it. And it gives you an idea of what has been done this past year and where the status is today. Along with that, to develop that ongoing outreach, there was a strategic plan that was put together, and that's on pages six through 11 in your backup. And then along with that, there were already some great things the city was doing for veterans. So there was a calendar that was developed of things that were already in place, and a few extra things that we developed together as the year went on. And that is also on pages 12 through 13. Now, what's exciting about this is that Mission United considers this program and reaching out to our cities to stay involved in the veteran community and coming alongside you as a resource, that they considered it such a priority that they actually hired a staff person to do just that. And I want to introduce Sean McPhee with me this, this evening. He will be, as of this evening, moving forward, I'm going to step aside, and he will be your point of contact and liaison to Mission United as a resource. And there are already other cities in Broward County lined up to become veteran-friendly cities. Now, in closing, let me just let you know what the next step looks like. All of these entities, the city managers, Jay Schecter, Mission United, and the chamber have come together collaboratively and will be meeting on this strategic plan and moving all those objectives forward. Your input is always going to be welcome and needed, and you'll be getting regular reports. Now, Mission United will be back in the fall to officially do a presentation to give you a seal, a claim that designates is a veteran, Mission United and city, a veteran-friendly city designation, so that you officially will be part of that program as we launch Broward Countywide. And then our websites will be linked, you'll receive an electronic seal, and we will do the same in putting your information on the Mission United website. And they're working on that right now. So congratulations. I know there's a lot of detail in your backups. Please read it, because when we come back in the fall, they're going to be working over the summer, but Sean is going to lead the pack for Mission United, and all those ideas we're looking forward to putting in place. Thank you for allowing me to be the liaison to get this launch started. It's been really, really exciting and amazing to work with this city. Congratulations.
Thank you, Stella. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you, Sean. Thank you so very, very much. Commissioners, anything? Okay. The next presentation, Mr. Dodge, if you will join me, please. This is a presentation by the mayor and the city manager to recognize Marlene D. Graham, City Clerk, in honor of her retirement on June 30, 2024, after 23 years of dedicated service to the City of Pembroke Pines. Those can't be for me. And my understanding is that her family is here. Will they please come forward? Every one of them. It is beautiful. Mr. Dodge, you want to start us off?
Whereas after serving the City of Pembroke Pines for 23 years, Marlene D. Graham will be retiring on June 30. And whereas Marlene began her career with the City of Pembroke Pines in 201 as a part-time clerical specialist in the city manager's office and became a full-time employee in February of 2002. In August of 2004, she moved to the mayor's office as an executive assistant. And in January 2014, she moved to the city clerk's office as deputy city clerk. And in June of 2014, she became the city clerk.
And whereas the performance of her duties and responsibilities, her working relationship were always characterized by an obvious dedication to getting the job well done. And whereas on behalf of the city commission, I want to express our sincere appreciation for her loyalty to the City of Pembroke Pines and wish her much happiness as she begins this exciting new chapter in her life. And whereas on behalf of the city commission, I want to express our sincere appreciation. Now, therefore, I Angelo Castillo, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Pembroke Pines, to hereby proclaim in June 30, 2024, as Marlene D. Graham Day. In the City of Pembroke Pines, and urge all citizens and employees to join me on the city commission in recognizing her outstanding service and dedication to this community. Marlene, Happy Marlene Graham Day.
Also, Marlene, I'd like to present to you a small token of our appreciation for your 23 years of dedicated service to the City of Pembroke Pines. I had the opportunity 23 years ago to hire Marlene. And I can tell you, over those years, there's a lot that Marlene has accomplished. During that time, not only working full-time, she also went back to college. She obtained her master's degree. And we are so proud of you.
And on a personal note, I just want to lament not only your loss, but the fact that I can't give you the rest of the day off because we have a city commission meeting to run, and we need you here. So, but we'll always need you here, and you will always be your family. And congratulations to you and to your family. Some words from you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I'm usually verbose. I usually talk a lot, as my people tell you, and my family too. But I just want to say thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Thank you, Mayor Castillo. And thanks to each member of the commission. And thank you to the staff and department heads. And all I can say is, my time here has been a learning experience. It's been fun. I've had some unfun days. But I just overall want to say thank you. This was a wonderful experience working for the City of Pembroke Pines. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor, I have a quick. Office family, come on up for a picture.
Mayor, I have a quick story after the photos, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rosie, yes.
Thank you again. Mayor? Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz. Thank you. Marlene, I need to come clean. Marlene, I need to come clean with you. Back about 11 years ago, well, 12 years ago, when I first moved into City Hall, I got a fish bowl, and I put a Chinese bait of fish in the bowl because I wanted to have some life inside City Hall when City Hall was closed. And we were closed on Fridays. Well, I wasn't doing such a great job keeping the bowl clean. And I received a call on a Thursday from Marlene saying, Commissioner, I regret to inform you, but your fish has died. Well, Marlene knew that I named the fish Freedom, right, just metaphorically. Well, what, Marlene, what you didn't know is the next day when City Hall was closed, I went to the pet shop, and I found an exact replica of the fish. And so on Monday, I walk into the building, and Marlene thinks it's the first, you know, she's seen me for the first time. I walk in the office. I walk there, I said, Marlene, I thought you told me the fish died. And she gets up, and she looks, and she taps on the thing, and the thing is moving. I said, remember, Marlene, freedom never dies.
Another fish story. There you go. All right. Beautiful. Fantastic. Thank you very much. Okay. Next is recognition of Caribbean American Heritage Month in the City of Pembroke Pines. I'd like to bring up Elizabeth Burns and her friends. This is the proclamation of the City of Pembroke Pines. Unique Harm and Culture Awards Day in celebration of Caribbean American Heritage Month. Whereas the 10th Annual Unique Caribbean American Heritage Month, CAHM, and the Culture Awards in celebration of National Caribbean American Month, come on up, will be held on June 30, 2024. And whereas Caribbean American Heritage Month and Culture Awards Celebration provides an opportunity to create more awareness for Caribbean American Heritage Month and showcases the cultural diversity, ethnicity, and heritage of the Caribbean people. The inclusion of an island theme featuring island music, entertainers, singers, culture performers, and other entertainers to showcase their talent. Whereas the city commission recognizes and appreciates Elizabeth Liz Burns, resident of Pembroke Pines, the creator of the Caribbean American Heritage Month and Culture Awards for her many years of contributions to their observation and celebration of Caribbean American Heritage Month, and wish you a successful event. And now I, therefore, Angelo Castillo, Mayor of the City of Pembroke Pines, hereby recognize Sunday, June 30, 2024, as Unique Caribbean American Heritage Month and Culture Awards Day in recognition of National Caribbean American Heritage Month. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Castillo, and congratulations once again. Thank you to the commissioners, city managers, city attorneys, city clerk. Thank you for all that you do in keeping our city safe and beautiful. Thank you. Folks, in 2010, I started celebrating Caribbean American Heritage Month because President Bush in 2006 signed it into office that June is Caribbean American Heritage Month. Many people did not know that even until 2010. So I decided to create some events surrounding that period of time. And I'm not going to go into too much details because I did create a website in recognition of the month of June. And so we post quite a lot of things on there. So for your information, you can go to CAHM, acronym for Caribbean American Heritage Month. You can look it up. My number is there. You can give me a call. And I know there's a long night ahead of these goodly folks. But I'd like to share some of the folks that are going to be honored this year. And that's Rosemary Santana. She's from Dominican Republic.
Salomo Medinas.
Thank you. Eugenie Monpreyere, she's from Haiti. And Ron Surin, also from Haiti. He's from Pembroke Pines as well. We try to incorporate the different islands of the Caribbean, and there are many. This year, we have El Cobano, Ronaldos from Cuba, he's not here today, Dominican Republic, Haiti, Jamaica, of course, Trinidad and Tobago. And so each year, we endeavor to encourage more people. And these folks are nominated. I have not chosen any one of them. They keep coming. In fact, we have honorees for next year as well. People are getting to like it and like to be honored, and understandably so. We all deserve the right to be honored and recognized for all the things that we do. And it doesn't matter where you're from. Over the years, we've also extended the honor to the folks in the USA because we do have a lot of people who are here, and they have supported and impacted the Caribbean American community. So it's my goal to make sure that these people are recognized for all that they do. All right? So thank you all so much. I won't bore you too much, but I just wanted to share that with you. And thank you, guys, for coming out. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very, very much. I will present a proclamation to Alfredo Olvera, recognizing the month of June 2024 as LGBTQI and Pride Month in the City of Pembroke Pines. Thank you for coming. You gonna take the pictures? Take them over there. This is a proclamation in the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, LGBTQI Pride Month. Whereas the City of Pembroke Pines cherishes the values and dignity of every person and appreciates the importance in equality and freedom. And whereas the City of Pembroke Pines denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender, identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas I need to bring Maria, Commissioner Maria Rodriguez, down to join me. And whereas the City of Pembroke Pines appreciates the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex plus community, which strengthen our social welfare. And
Whereas it is imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders.
Now, therefore, I Angelo Castillo, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Pembroke Pines and on behalf of the city commission to hereby proclaim the month of June 2024 as LGBTQI Pride Month in the City of Pembroke Pines. Congratulations and all the best. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I talk a lot, so I just wrote it down.
Just wrote it down?
It's faster. Good evening, everybody. Mayor Castillo, Vice Mayor Tom Good, Commissioners Hernandez, Rodriguez, and Short. I am deeply honored and grateful to receive the proclamation celebrating Pride Month and recognizing the achievement of the LGBTQ+ community. This gesture is a powerful affirmation of your unwavering commitment to diversity, inclusion, and equality. It sends a strong message of support and acceptance to the entire LGBTQ+ community in Pembroke Pines and beyond. This proclamation is more than just a piece of paper. It represents the city's dedication to fostering an environment where everyone, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity, can feel valued and included. By acknowledging Pride Month and our contributions and achievements, you are helping to break down barriers and promote understanding and acceptance. Your support is a beacon of hope and encouragement, reminding us that we're not alone in our journey towards equality and acceptance. It is through actions like these that we can continue to build a more inclusive and accepted society where everyone can thrive and be their true selves. So thank you once again for this incredible honor and for your ongoing commitment to celebrating diversity and championing the rights of the LGBTQ+ community in Pembroke Pines. Together, we can make a difference and create a brighter, more inclusive future for all. Happy Pride.
I don't know. Thank you. Happy Pride Month. Okay. Okay. Big agenda today. Items at the request of the public. I have two items here today. James Corman? Did I say? I'm trying to read your item. Grimes?
Yes.
Please come forward. No, it's okay. It's pretty good for on the wall. Your name and address for the record, please. There's a button there that says push to speak. You're on.
Good day, Commissioner.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is James Grimes. Address is 1000 St. Charles Place. I lived in the Park Place condos at this point in time.
Yes, sir.
I was, I would like to bring up a concern about safety. There's a golf course next to us. And we've been having a lot of problems with stray balls. And the other day, I was walking up the path, and I got struck in the face with this golf ball right here in my eye. And I was kind of abandoned. I was knocked out. I was out for a while. I'm not sure exactly how long. But I remember waking up to the sound of somebody asking me, Mister, do you need help? Can I help you? Are you okay? And I wiped my face and seen blood. And I says, call me an ambulance. And he turned around, got in his buggy, left. And I never seen him or an ambulance. After some time sitting on a bench, there was a bench about 10, 15 feet away. I sat on the bench, held my head. I was extremely disoriented. And I had asked for help for several times, and nobody had heard me because there was nobody around. I finally made it to my apartment and went to the hospital. Luckily, nothing was severely damaged. Nothing was broken, no brain bleeding. I have a little whiplash and a little swelling in the brain. I'm feeling great today. But my address to the commissioners, if possible, is, can we put up some? you may save some lives, and you may save some people from being severely injured.
Sir, first, we're very, very thankful that you're well and that you're recovering. And it was a freak accident that occurred. I know that you are a golfer, and so you know that something like this hardly ever happens, but it can happen. And when I was at Park Place doing my town hall meeting, it was mentioned that golf balls, with some frequency, depending on the hole, do hit the buildings and do hit sometimes cars. But we had no report of any person hit until now. We feel terrible about it. We had already begun the process to put up several screens because your neighbors asked for it. Your condo association asked for it.
Excellent.
However, I have spoken to the city manager, and I don't believe that anyone here will object. He is going to accelerate the installation. That's a commitment that you have from the city. There will be screens there. You don't need them on every hole, but certainly where we can be a better neighbor we want to be. While the city has no liability under the law, if you live near a golf course, there is an assumption of risk in return for the beauty of the view that you are guaranteed to have of the golf course. That doesn't mean that we can't be better neighbors.
Absolutely.
We're very, very sorry for what happened to you, and we're going to take steps to make it even safer because we value your safety and we value being a good neighbor. So I want to thank you for coming forward. I'm delighted that you're recovering. I'm sorry that this incident occurred. However, there will be safer conditions there, and the golfer that hit the ball will be assessed two strokes.
If you can find him.
Let me know. Yes. I know myself and the community will thank you for those actions. And that's all we were asking for is a place to be safe in our own communities. I had only been there five days, by the way, sir.
You moved in from Naples?
Yes, sir.
All of the bad luck that you might ever have in Pembroke Pines is behind you. I would go buy a Lotto ticket because the chances of you winning Lotto, I think, are slightly better than you getting hit by a golf ball off the course.
I'm gonna do that right now.
So thank you very much. I'm delighted that you're getting better, and we respect your comments, and we will act on them. Thank you.
Mayor, Mr. Grimes, which hole number was it? I know you're off of one. Where were you walking at?
I'm in the Elm Building 1000.
He was walking along nine.
Yes, I was walking behind the pole. I do believe he pointed that out as hole nine.
Yeah.
So that was an unfortunate.
Yeah, I'll tell you. So it had to go over the tree, and there is some netting there.
There is. And there's some really tall trees.
Right. And it was a freak accident. You know, in my opinion?
Yes, sir.
There's a section there just past that, the sand trap, to where there's nothing there.
Right.
And so I think it's like
The approach shot there is very often downhill. And unless you know how to play a downhill line, and unfortunately, many in Florida don't, the ball will go right. And so there needs to be netting there, especially by the pool area. Were you near the pool?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you got hit by an approach shot, more than likely. And that's a concerning issue. The Parks Department is aware of it. The city manager is aware of it, and they've given me so that I can give you our word that there will be netting there.
Thank you all.
Okay? Thank you very much. Have a good day. Okay. Next up is Nick Matthews. Your name and your address for the record, please. Good to see you again.
Good evening, Mayor. This is on item 20. Is this the appropriate time?
The item 20 would be when the item comes up.
I filled that, was what I filled out.
No, that's fine. When the item comes up, I will call you.
It's an item that's on the consent agenda.
It's best that you speak then.
On behalf of take the opportunity, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, thank you for the opportunity. Again, Nick Matthews with the Becker Firm, One East Broward Boulevard.
You want to speak now or when the item comes up?
Oh, you said best speak now.
No, no, no. It's best to speak when the item
Yeah, that's what I intended.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then you called me.
Thank you very much. We will call you. Thank you. Thank you, Nick. Okay. Long evening. Hopefully, we can get through this because after this, we have an executive meeting. And I'd also like to underscore that the Caribbean American Heritage Festival will be Saturday, June 29th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. here at the Charles F. Dodge City Center. And all are invited. Consent agenda consists of items 1 through 39, except for item 10 and item 27, which were pulled by administration. So it's items 1 through 39, except for 27 and 10, which were pulled. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Can I pull 20, please?
Item 20 will be pulled by Commissioner Rodriguez. Hold on. Any others?
Mayor, I'd like to have 7 and 22.
7 and 22 by Schwartz. 7 and 22. Yes, sir? Any others? Any others? I need a motion on the consent agenda for items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, 11, 12, 15, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 21, 23, 24, 25, 26, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, and 37, 38, and 39. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Moved by Commissioner Rodriguez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hernandez. Any discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let it show that the consent agenda, except for those items pulled, is adopted unanimously. Commissioner Schwartz, number 7.
Motion to approve the minute of the Wednesday, May 15, 2024 interim commissioner dish for selection and regular commission meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Schwartz.
Mayor, I'm working with the administration on a verbatim minute review. I just need a little bit more time. I'll bring it back in August if we get defer until then.
Is there a motion to defer?
Motion to defer, Mayor.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
The second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion? Motion to defer, any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Sorry?
Opposed.
The item is approved or to one with Commissioner Hernandez opposed. Item number 10 was pulled. Item number 20, Commissioner Rodriguez.
I read the item, right?
Yes, you have to read it.
Motion to approve the findings and recommendations of the Evaluation Committee and to award the contract for RFP number AD23-02, Operation and Management of Transportation Services to the Transportation Authority LLC.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor. Commissioner Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Thank you. I want to make a motion to defer this for after the break. I don't believe that personally, and I won't speak to anybody else, understand fully the components of this item. I want to understand a little bit more about the question of the RFP as a whole because I believe it was announced in January before I was here. I think it might be a good idea to consider what was on the RFP and if we want to evaluate other aspects. I have a couple of ideas that I would like to look into or at least add as supplemental to this, but I would need a little bit more time to really evaluate. However, I understand that especially for our seniors and for our students, this is a crucial system that needs to be working. So I say that we defer it, but also keep the contract going for three months or whatever is at the pleasure of the commission so that we do have that transportation system for our seniors, for the community shuttle service, and for students, especially going into the sort of the school year.
Mr. City Manager, the city attorney, do you have any problem with extending the contract for three months and bringing this item back? Shoot, the commissioner wishes to defer it for more questions.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a problem. August school begins, and during the month of June, the transportation system for our schools' schedules are being made. It'd be very difficult. I do have the authority to extend it 180 days, but to move something in the middle of a school year would probably be very difficult. We certainly could defer. We could extend it for community bus as well as senior transportation, but as far as the school transportation system, it could create a problem. But certainly, if you wanted to defer both the element of community bus and senior transportation, we could do that. I have the authority to extend it 180 days, but I'd be very cautious about making any change during the school year on bus transportation. It doesn't mean we could not go back out for bid again for the next school year, but we'd have to do it to give us enough time to plan.
So just for clarity, we could defer for the 180 days?
Certainly, if you defer it, I have the authority to extend for 180 days. But again, I would be concerned about school transportation schedule.
Are we able to split it up so that?
Yes, that's my suggestion. Is that we could do the community bus and we could do the senior transportation and bring that back if you had some additional questions or wanted to rebid that element of it. It complicates it a little bit because we do have one vendor. We have one shop for repairs for vehicles, but certainly, we could look at it.
Okay. I mean, if anybody else has anything to talk about, but I think if that's the best way to go about it, then we split it up and we extend it in those different
So your motion is to defer the community bus and the senior transportation items and move forward to approve the contracts for the school bus?
It's not my preference, but I understand that that's what's best for the students.
The only question I have, Mayor, and I'd have to defer
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. Vice Mayor, are you willing to second that?
I'm willing to second, and I'd like to say something to them.
Yes, sir. City Manager?
The only question I have, and I defer to the Purchasing Manager, if the way we bid it, if that causes any issue regarding how it was bid regarding price, that's something we would also have to look at. But I certainly would not recommend we defer the award for the school buses.
Good afternoon. Mark Gomes, procurement director. As you mentioned, the contract does have different aspects to it, including charter school, bus service, shuttle bus service, and senior transportation. There are various positions throughout that contract, but if we wanted to extend it for a six-month period, there's certain costs that would have to be split. So we can work that out internally with the vendor and proceed as is.
Okay. And with that, we would still have the opportunity to go out for a bid if needed?
If needed, if that's the desire of the commission.
Okay.
So when would it come back, Mr. City Manager?
I would say we would probably want to bring it back in about maybe four months to give us some time, probably by the first of the year.
Commissioner, that's acceptable?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just giving a different perspective on this, recognizing some of the complications. I recognize this is a five-year with a five-year and a five-year, two five-year renewals on top of that. Is there anything that would prohibit us from just doing a one-year contract?
No, there's nothing that prohibits you. I don't know what impact that would have on the price though.
Same thing on the six, but just having thought about just maybe doing a one-year contract as opposed to a five-year contract, I don't know if that satisfies what you might be concerned about.
I would like to, yes, that's a good suggestion. I think we, and I don't know if it's part of the RFP or whatever aspect we're going to look into, but I think that the length of the contract is quite extensive and would like to analyze that a little bit further.
Mr. Gomes, any objection to one-year contract for all three components?
No, I believe if that's the will of the commission, we could do a one-year extension and then regroup with the City Commission on their recommendations on how they'd like to go out.
The city attorney, any objection?
Not legally, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I mean, would that like require, I mean, you said a one-year extension, and I was just talking about a one-year contract. Can the amendment be made such that it's not a five-year, it's a one-year contract?
I don't see an issue with that.
Yeah, to clarify, we're talking about the length of the contract itself, the extension. I would like it to stay for the six months.
I'm a little confused. What's the motion before us?
I believe that Commissioner Rodriguez is just looking for the extension. So that means we would have to pull a piece out, and the piece that's being pulled out, is that a one-year or a five-year contract for the school? Because that's what the city manager is asking.
No, sir. Under her motion, she pulled the senior bus program and the community bus program, but she is moving the school bus program forward.
And is that for a one-year or a five-year period?
That's for the term under the RFP. However, this city commission has the right to terminate the community, so it really doesn't matter. It's just moving that portion of the contract, which is before us right now, for simplicity's sake, and, you know, settling Commissioner Rodriguez and your, or anyone's concerns with respect to the other items.
Sorry. We would be able, so there is the option to approve the school contract only for one year?
Yes.
Okay.
If you wish.
I would like to do that.
City Manager, any problem with that?
That would make it much simpler for us if it was for a one-year period, and then we could agree there.
Okay.
Mr. Gomes, no problem. One-year contract for the bus only.
For the school bus only?
Okay. City Attorney?
Before you vote, Mr. Mayor, there's a speaker who needs to be heard.
Yes, I understand. Any objection on your end?
Not at the moment.
Any other commissioners wishing to speak? Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you. Just for historical perspectives for our new colleagues, the last time this came up, the current vendor didn't bid at all, chose not to bid, and was awarded the contract I was prepared tonight to send it back to the committee, or a re-review, actually, and to allow the manager to use his emergency powers under the charter for the 180 days. And he can come back to the commission if it's going to take longer than 180, but he has authority to extend without asking us to do that. So I think at this point, I have had conversations with city administration, city attorney, a review of the paperwork, the bid protest, knowing the historical perspective of where things are. I have a sense of what the speaker may be bringing to the table, which is kind of raising that he and I have not had a conversation, but, I mean, the words that were written in the protest were pretty clear that the winning bidder used the City of Pembroke Pines as a reference, which is not allowed in the RFP. That's disqualifying.
Commissioner, I have to ask you to state to the motion.
So on the motion, right, the motion in front of us now, Commissioner, is whether or not we're going to approve buses for kids. I think best would be to I think best would be to go back to the um, either the deferral. Or send it back to the committee for re-review, allow the city manager to use his emergency powers. He has to bring it back to us anyway, a hundred and eighty days. We don't even get through December. He has to bring it back before the end of the year. Meanwhile, we'll have between now and hopefully if it goes back to the committee, a uh, a re-review of uh, of the uh evaluation. And if they're unable to come with a conclusion, then we go out the bid in in August. But I think the best path forward tonight would be to allow the manager to extend under his emergency powers. Send it back to the committee for review.
Okay, any 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 anybody else uh wish wish to be heard on this item? Uh, anybody from the public wish to be heard?
I guess that's just me.
Yes, sir. Your your name and your uh, your address or affiliation for the record?
Uh, good afternoon, Nick Matthews. I'm with the Becker Firm on behalf of Prokell Transportation. Uh, Prokell was a respondent to your RFP for these services. Um, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to to discuss a little bit. Um, first, no matter what the outcome is, we would never suggest don't do what you need to do to get kids to school. And and whatever that takes, whatever maneuver, emergency power or otherwise. Um, but I have to, I I'm compelled to bring this to your attention. I know commission as a as a body, you do not relish, you don't love getting involved. Deep down in the procurement process, putting your hands around staff processes. But every now and then, as elected officials, as policymakers. That opportunity arises where it's incumbent on you to kind of get your hands around something. Um, and you need to do that in the name of fairness, the name of a level playing field, the name of a competitive process. And in this case, all of those things for a minority-owned business who's an upstart in this industry and is growing through Broward, through South Florida. Um, sadly, what happened along in this process doesn't fit the bill of any of those three things. Fairness, competitiveness, competitiveness, transparency. I think, um, Commissioner Schwartz, thank you for bringing up that. There are a couple of things that are absolute in this procurement. These were black and whites. Do not, do not list a City of Pemper Pines project as a reference. The incumbent did that. The other do not was do not list staff from the City of Pemper Pines as your personal references.
Sir, I I I have to interrupt you and I'm sorry to do it. Um, uh, unless I'm mistaken, your 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 invitation to speak is for the item that's in front of us. What we have in front of us is a motion uh to defer for a certain period of time. We're not here to to hear about the um, the um, bid protest again.
Well, I'll do for so many, I think as policymakers, that process should inform your decision tonight, would be what I would suggest. And I'm willing, I'm I'm getting ready to move off of some of the flaws.
I'll give you the, I'll give you some leeway.
A little bit of leeway would be wonderful. And like I mentioned, the last piece of kind of this black and white thing. And in your procurement documents, underlined in bold, do not do, incumbent did so, three city staffers listed as um, the references. One of those folks was on the committee that made these decisions. So as you do all of the backup and kind of some of the holes and some of the flaws in the process. That those things should be important to you folks as policymakers. Every now and then, you need to reach down into the staff process and say, hey, let's get our arms around this. This this involves us at this point. Um, I I, Prokell, my client in this has won several cities in Broward offering newer technology, micro mobility. Deviated uh fixed routes, a lot of creative technology solutions that have several of you. Ran on some transportation things and reducing congestion and neat ideas locally to fix mobility. Uh, this desperately means a rebid or even request of the commission. Get presentations, get the incumbent, get Prokell, get, if you need to open it again, do so. But get presentations directly to you. You are the policymakers. You are the ones who have to be accountable for this service. This is a very public service. People can see this and feel it and experience it every day in the community. I would encourage you as commissioners to request presentations of the two providers, maybe. Um, I would, I would encourage the city manager to use emergency powers to make sure the wheels of the county keep, or the city keep running, of course. But this, please take a second, look at this. Do you, you have the authority to reject all bids and go out again. Extend, request presentations, whatever it is. At a policy level, commissioners, please take this, get your hands around it. You're the ones who are most accountable for it. Um, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much for your comment. Anyone else want to be heard on the subject?
Mr. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just like clarification because we originally talked about emergency powers and then I heard.
No, the motion is still, the motion is still the motion.
Okay, is it changed to a one-year contract for school?
That's what I heard.
Okay.
At your, at your recommendation, so we're looking at a one-year contract uh for the school buses. And we're looking for, we 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 are on a deferral for the other two components, correct?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, sir?
Just to clarify, it's a one-year for the school buses, six months for the shuttle and senior transportation? Because those end on June thirtieth.
Those will have to be extended under the city manager's uh 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 authorities.
Mayor, some clarification, please.
Yes, sir.
Is the one-year based on the contract that's currently in place?
It's based, it's based, it's based on the commissioner's the um, um, motion. However, you you're asking about the money. City Attorney, would it would be based on what money?
I'm not sure I know the question. What is the question?
He's asking, the 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 year extension will be based on what money, the current agreement or the uh, or the proposed agreement?
I would defer to the administration to the to the calculation.
What would it, what would it be? The current agreement or the proposed?
Uh, yes, uh.
I would imagine that it would be the proposed agreement.
From my understanding of what uh, the city commission was attempting to pass is uh, approving the agreement that's presented to them tonight. But for one year, only for the charter school bus program and then six months for the other two programs.
Under the proposed agreement?
Under the proposed agreement.
We all clear? All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just before you close out the item, and I don't choose the record to reflect anything adverse to the commission. But as you know, as members of this public body, you're beholden to the Broward County Ethics Code. Broward County Ethics Code expressly disallows this public body from interfering with the actions of a selection and qualifications committee, which was formed for this particular purpose. But the record reflects that your decision this evening, which is based on the motion made, seconded and carried. Was not in the context of this discussion, an interference or interruption of the service of that committee. And does not rise to the level of being a violation of the Ethics Code. That was not your intention by this motion, nor is it the substance of your decision. And should that ever be inquired of by the OIG, I'm putting on the record now. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Fisher Schwartz, item twenty-two.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. A motion to approve a license agreement with Rain Tree at Mayfair Homeowners Association for the installation of fencing and gates. At the city-owned, at Rain Tree Park to be purchased, installed and maintained by Rain Tree HOA. With the city contributing thirty thousand dollars to the cost of the gate and agreeing to operate and opening the. And closing of the gate daily in accordance with established park hours.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor.
Um, if if I may get an over like a satellite view of the area, I thought I saw in the exhibit. Uh, where this fence line was going to go.
Madam Clerk, do you have that?
While the clerk is pulling that up, I had a conversation uh with city administration regarding park hours. And some of the challenges that we're already facing with the opening and closing of gates. I'm just curious to know what would the closing of the gate do for this open space? Um, if there's a concern about trespassing. Uh, I want to um, bring uh our new colleagues up to speed on something that I had gotten done back on Sheridan Street. Sometime, um, maybe maybe a predate Vice Mayor Good. But we have a community that the the kids were leaving school and they're cutting through the community. So we found um, some city right-of-way that we just put the fence up on and that solved the problem. I see this linear park. I don't know where the gate would be closed that would. That would prevent anyone from entering. I I don't see where this, where this fence is going to go in order to close this off, right? So conceptually, I don't want people trespassing on other people's stuff. But operationally, I don't know where the gate gets closed, where it gets opened. And if it's opened all day, it doesn't prevent anyone from trespassing in when the kids go to and from school. So closing it at night, I don't know what this accomplishes.
Uh, Mr. Uh, City Attorney, who can answer the Commissioner's question?
I think perhaps professional staff might be best able to answer the question about the intentions are with regard to the closure and the fencing. And I see that Christine is approaching the podium to clarify.
And the, I know when uh, when Rain Tree was purchased, um, uh, I want to bring up a, I want to bring up a. A a a name that uh beloved Gerard Mayer uh came forward, uh, Mayor Castillo. And he was advocating for his community and keeping Washington Street open. And that's the linear park was going to be for the entire community. So if we are uh looking at an agreement with Rain Tree, have we reached out to the other HOAs? Now, are they aware of the proposed action that commission may take? That may limit their ability to have twenty-four access to something that we had agreed upon in the benefit?
Christina Thorson, this is City Manager. So, I think I'm going to answer your question. Just let me tell a little bit of the process that we went through. Um, the HOA approached the city administration as stating that they had.
Which HOA?
Rain Tree HOA, Rain Tree, May, Rain Tree at Mayfair. They approached the city administration with some concerns they had about security and safety. This park does not have any gate or fences that open and close. The only thing that's in this park right now is a split-rail picket fence and some bollards to prevent vehicle access on the road or on in the parks. Um, this park was open in twenty twenty-one. This park was a result of some development decisions that were made. When the city purchased the former Rain Tree Golf Course. Uh, it was done in phases. The first phase was to develop homes. And this park, along with the northern piece, was supposed to be city park. Through decisions made by the the commission, they sold the northern piece, but the city kept the linear park. It was supposed to be a road that was going to cut through and connect one thirteen and Hiata. And the surrounding communities, Pastiny Pool Homes, Fairway on the Green. Um, the other here, and I can never remember the name of that community to the south. They said, no, we do not want a road in our backyard, and so we decided to maintain it as a park. Fast forward, it is a city park. There are no gates. Um, they approached us and asked us to, can we do something about the security? We did not want to remove it at the park. We wanted it to still be open during park hours, which are published in our code and they are from dusk till dawn. The compromise with the community was understanding during the day, we get it, it's a park. We want to allow the public, children, people to be able to access it, to use it as a pass-through to access Watching Street, maybe even Flamingo Road. Um, but at night, when the sun goes down, when the park is closed, they would like the park to be closed. So through several discussions with them and the city manager, this was the compromise that we came to. Right now, that park, if you look at that area that's bubbled in red, those are hedges that are on city property. The city property is not just the, where you see the road, that little piece just to the north of it where those hedges are, that's also city property as well. All those hedges belong to the city and they're maintained by the city. So the HOA came back and said, we're going to put the fence, if you look at it, it's, I guess, green was probably not the best color to choose here. But all the way on the left-hand side, there's a fence that connects to what is Master List Station four. There's a fence there now that's city property. So it'll connect from Master List Station four fence to the property uh fence on Fairway on the Green. And there's a gate there, this twelve-foot gate, six foot on each side, and it will be, it's swing gate, they will be opened and closed. And then on the other side, where you see the other hedge on the, the middle of the page, there's a longer green line. And that green line connects to their property, which is the lake across our walking path, along the edge of the. Hedges and into into the lake, which is their property. And that one will also have two six-foot gates that can be opened and closed. The arrangement was that they will maintain the hedges. They will take over maintaining the hedges, cutting them about once a month, once a quarter. Keeping them in line, looking nice with their property, and in exchange, we will open and close the gate. I had the discussion with our contractor and they said, Christina, the cost of going twice a day versus sending someone out there to cut the hedges, it's a wash. And there would be no additional cost to the city to open and close.
Anything else?
Oh, yes, Ms. Thorson, thank you. Has there been any consideration regarding the water uh situation? You, with with the extent, with the extension of of a fence line going to water? Um, you know, we we have. We have, we have had instance where kids are going to be kid, there is a elementary school just to the east. And. I don't know how um, putting a fence in this area is going to do anything for security. Uh, whereas just posting that the park is closed at night, I don't know as far as enforcement goes. We also have, um, the road can be used for first responders. It's wide enough for a fire truck. Response time.
I don't, I I don't, I wouldn't know. I'm not sure. It was built as a past park, so.
If, but I I'd like, I'd like to be able to physically see it. Um, there there is, there is certainly a a a want and a need to secure property. I'm all for that. At the same time, I have to balance public safety and public acts access. Uh, can you give me a chance to take a look at it? Um, first meeting will obviously bring this thing back. Because I need to, I need to know about the other communities. They haven't been reached out to. And testimony, thank you, Ms. Thorson, for 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 confirming that there were commitments made to other communities. We have to have that conversation. I've at least let them know this is what's being considered so that they can weigh in. That's all. So I mean, fairness would be, you know, uh, if if we had a meeting in July, you know, it'll be quick. But um, I can make myself available tomorrow to take a look at this. I did ask, as you know, we spoke on Friday, and I asked for this information and I still don't have it. So I can't support something if I don't have all the information. I'm asking for a deferral until the first meeting of August.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Uh, we're back to the original motion. Does anyone else wish to be heard on the item? Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I I just want to say, um, you know, this has been a very long haul. In regards to trying to find a solution to something that was created a long time ago. I mean, if you really understand the history about this development, you will understand that there are a lot of complications that came with it. And what's left is the people who live there today are having to deal with a, with a, with a concern. And so the community has taken it upon themselves to 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 amp up, if you will, their ability to. You know, provide themselves with a security that they felt. And this was, this was the the point where there was a complication. Uh, a lot of things were discussed, uh, and I will tell you, I know this community and the other surrounding communities, and there's been conversation. This is the best balance that I can tell you that has been found. In order to be able to provide the community with the safety they need. And at the same time, allowing staff to continue on with their uh vision of of providing a park space. And, you know, uh, there's another element here. It's a gateway, a pathway. Uh, you know, trying to tie it into to the larger Broward County uh su- uh system. So the community agreed to this solution, which to me, I was very thankful for. I didn't really think that they would go there, but they did. And they had, they had the uh. Um, the strength to stand up and say, okay, we can afford to allow it to be during the day. We won't, we'll allow all that traffic wave. But at night, they just want to be able to sleep well. And I got to tell you, staff did a great job. Uh, I can't tell you how much effort has been put into this. Uh, the leadership of the HOA spent an incredible amount of time uh going back and forth with staff. You know, trying to find the solution. You know, they got a lot of skin in the game. I mean, there's, there are other things here. I mean, when we talk about, you know, closing the gates. I mean, they even have a solution where there, the gate's going to be electronic, so nobody's going to be, you know, unable. Is that correct still, right? So I mean, it's it's going to be open when it needs to be open and at dusk, it's going to be closed, just like any other park in the city. That has security systems, and not all parks have it, but fifty percent of the parks have security systems like this.
Point clarification. Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Uh, point clarification.
Good point.
Yes, Ms. Sorenson, it's the first I'm hearing that there's going to be electronics.
What do you mean, Christina Sorenson, Assistant City Manager, what do you mean that the gate will have a maglock? So let's just say, for whatever reason, my staff member is 10 minutes late and times the park to be open, they're on a timer, so they'll unlock, but they just won't be open. My staff will physically come and open the gate.
Is there a reason why we can't get this motorized on a time?
We looked at that as an option, very expensive option, and-
How expensive?
$40,000 plus, they will break all the time. Look how often the gate out here is broken.
Well-
So it's just, it was one of those things that we just felt like a manual process of opening and closing, especially knowing that there are children that use this pass to get to school. I wanted to make sure my staff had eyes on it every day.
All right, Vice Mayor, these are things that I certainly like to support. I also like to bring them forward as a commission item, to say, listen, this is important to my district, this is what the community is looking for.
Vice Mayor, you have to stick to your-
I am. This is placed on consent. It's not the way to do business. I'll support the item tonight, I will, but this is not the way to move forward. We got, we, as a collective body, because this sets precedent for other areas in the city, and so we're essentially creating a policy for what to do in the future. So I would, I would just encourage-
There is no policy in the, in the, in the motion that is being created by this. This is simply about fence for one part. Mr. Rodriguez.
I just wanted to ask, I know that one of the security concerns was regarding ATVs being able to fit through the opening, and now with the gate, it would be closed. So I just wanted clarification on that. And then I think Christina kind of answered it, but just doubling down on the point that kids will be able to go through this, because one thing that we have an issue with is traffic, because people have to drive their kids to school, so that there is a pathway that's accessible to them and will continue to be accessible to them.
Yes, absolutely, and the HOA, we've talked to them, and even when, because it's dusk till dawn, but even we know, like, the time changes, so school might actually start, and it's still dark, we're going to work with them, and we're going to work to make sure this park is accessible to the kids that need to get to school. And to your point, the issue was the bollards, not necessarily the gate, making sure that they can't fit through the bollards. So we're going to adjust those bollards to make sure that they don't, golf carts and things like that can't fit in between them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And for the members in the public, we want to thank you for coming out. We know that you have lots to do with your time, but, and we also want to thank you for working with, with the staff cooperatively, Pembroke Pines is a family that can do things together, and by being here, you demonstrate that, and I want to thank you all. Is anyone from the public that wishes to speak? You sure? Okay, please come forward, and your name and address for the record. No, you have to, you have to do it here, I'm sorry.
My name is Michelle Cantor. My address is 1293 Southwest 113th Way, and by the way, where I live, there's a huge door there, and all the vehicles, the fire engines, everybody can come through.
Okay.
You have a lock, okay. When I first, when I moved here, and it was, it's not only me, I spoke to so many people who never knew about this public park thing. I mean, I don't know, I guess it's the fault of the bill, they're not telling anybody? I don't know, but I never knew of, so, you know, that makes me upset, okay? Now, everything seemed to be all right. I mean, there were other problems with the Wawa being built, people climbing over the fence, coming over, people on my lawn and things, swishing and doing all this. And I just asked nicely, you got to leave this as private property, whatever. There has been a couple of things that happened, which the office became aware of. I don't know if the fellow, like, what happened with, when I used to walk with my son a little in the evening, it was somebody, and I think he had some kind of problem. I don't know what it is, like, you know, he'd be walking around, like, I don't know if something's wrong with him, he was on drugs, you know, he didn't live in our community. And, I mean, I see a lot of people walking around, but I feel like, not only because of the price for some of the houses there and all, we were, we were supposed to have a guard in the tower, we were supposed to have all this security, I mean, that's what was told to me. So it makes me really upset a little bit. But so far, there were cars being stolen all before we even had the fence. I mean, my move there was before they even had a, you know, like, somebody in the tower or some better security. And so now, I mean, that seems to be better. But I'm just saying, it makes me upset because I didn't know any of this when I moved there, and I think it probably bothers some other people. I mean, hopefully, I don't know if anybody's gotten anything stolen. I mean, somebody broke into my car once, but that was when they didn't have the security in front. We have a kiosk, and we have a little fence, we're going to, they're going to build another fence soon in the front. So, I mean-
I want to thank you for coming forward, and I want to tell you that, that your security and your happiness in your home is very, very important to us. You have a community to be proud of, good people live there, and they look out for one another, and you've got a great police department looking out for you-
Yes.
And a city commission that cares about you, and I want to thank you for your comments. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Thank you.
Being none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, congratulations on your fence. Okay, moving on, item, I think that's everything in the consent agenda. Second reading ordinances. City Attorney, will you read?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission. Item number 40 is a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 2024-06 on second and final reading. For the record, it's proposed ordinance number 2024-06, is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida pertaining to the subject of zoning and land development, amending chapter 155 of the City Pembroke Pines Code of Ordinances to update provisions and use tables, correcting scrutiny errors and improving the clarity of the chapter, providing for conflict, providing for separability, providing for codification, and finally, providing for an effective date. Second and final reading, number 2024-06 on the public record. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Move by Commissioner Hernandez, is there a second?
Second is-
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion?
Need a public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion? Hearing none, public hearing, open to the public. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Public hearing is closed. Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodrigo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes.
For the record, Mayor and Commission, the permanent number of number 40 is actually numbered at 2022, 2022.
And by, by your action, this is now a law. Item 41.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. 41 is an item which is under the emergency ordinance category. It's a motion to pass and adopt proposed ordinance number 2024-07 on final reading. It is a sec, first and second reading combined under the city's Code of Ordinances and chapter 166, to reasons which we'll explain after I read the title into the record for the Mayor and Commission. Proposed ordinance number 2024-07 is an emergency ordinance of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending ordinance number 2017 and 2020 to authorize a change in date for a special election to fill a vacancy in the District 4 Commission seat to August 2024, 2024. In the event, the supervisor of elections is either ordered by the court to provide such date to the City of Pembroke Pines, or the supervisor of elections provides written consent for such date. Confirming candidates that qualified during the qualifying period established by ordinances number 2017 and 2020 shall remain qualified for an August 2024 special election date. Providing authority for the City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk to take all steps legally necessary to implement the intent of this ordinance, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion? Motion to approve. Motion is made by the Vice Mayor, is there a second? I'll second the motion. Mr. City Attorney, can you explain this, please?
I can, if you will, Mr. Mayor. My law partner, Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Thurlow, will approach the, God bless you, will approach the podium for clarity and for other updated information. As you know, the City of Pembroke Pines filed suit against the Broward Supervisor of Elections. The matter has been assigned to Judge Keith and Frank. Over the last several weeks, there have been several hearings, one of which being a motion to dismiss hearing that was filed by the County Attorney's Office on behalf of Mr. Scott. The motion was denied by Judge Keith and Frank, and he scheduled a matter, which is the city's complaint, for a trial, which was scheduled for tomorrow, Thursday, the 20th of June, which was initially filed and confirmed by the, by the judge. The item was pulled by the judge, and ultimately, a motion for a temporary injunction was substituted in place of the complaint, which supplements the complaint, which is now the item before Judge Keith and Frank at 9:30 on the Thursday morning, the 20th of August. Why is this before the Commission? Couple of reasons, and it's, it's one based upon timing, and timing being of the essence. The lawsuit which the city authorized the City Attorney's Office to file was co-counseled by our law firm, Goran Sharif, Dudy Anesro, along with the Johnson and Selma firm, Chris Sterns and Bruce Johnson, who also appeared in court on behalf of the city during the motion to dismiss hearing. This ordinance actually provides options. We go to court this Thursday on the city's motion for temporary injunction. The court could deny the motion before the, before the court. If the court denies the motion, the end result is that the election which was proposed for will be conducted in the month of November, and the general election conducted in November. In the event that the court approves of the motion for injunction, this ordinance would authorize the parties to shift their qualified candidates from the November election, which the supervisor granted to the City of Pembroke Pines, to the August election, which is the primary election to be conducted in Broward County. That's the predicate for why it's before the Commission this evening. The city publicly, thoughtfully requested that we file suit on behalf of the city, which we did. The judge was assigned, the judge has reviewed the documents and pleadings, and on Thursday, there'll be an evidentiary hearing. What does that mean? The judge is going to take testimony from those in the room, which could include the city's City Manager, could include an Assistant City Attorney, could include Supervisor of Elections or others, but will make, make a decision, and he actually was very clear about this, that the likelihood of Judge Frank finalizing and offering a decision from the bench on Thursday is likely. There is a hard deadline that's been imposed or requested by the Supervisor of Elections for the delivery of qualitative documents to be able to be printed for the August election on August the 21st, which is Fri, Friday, correct?
July 20, I'm sorry, June 21st.
June 21st.
Mike Thurlow, Assistant City Attorney, sorry.
So not knowing, as we sit here this evening, what Judge Frank will do, we know what the two options are. Number one, he could deny the city's motion for temporary injunction, and the matter is anyone qualified, who qualified in March, who qualified in June, would be on the November ballot. That's already been consented to and authorized. If, however, the judge were to grant the city's motion for injunction, it would then enjoin the supervisor and would require that the, those folks who qualified in March and who qualified in, in June would be on the August ballot. So this ordinance basically authorizes some flexibility, not knowing what the judge will do, and we can't predict that. We believe the city has a valid and constitutionally supportive case based upon our review of the case law and decisions. Judge Frank has made a decision based upon the motion filed by the county to not dismiss this case, and now before the judge will be the motion for temporary injunction, which I shared with you when it was filed several days ago. Mike, if you wouldn't highlight it, I'd appreciate it, would your mayor's permission to highlight further?
Mr. Thurlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate, this is presented to you as an emergency ordinance, it is very rare to do, but the timing is what creates the emergency, because you've had to establish your election dates before, because, by ordinance, because the supervisor has declined to allow the city to set an election within 180 days of the city's charter. So those, you've had to do by ordinance, both the original election date and qualifying period, and then when you amended to add a qualifying period, additional qualifying period earlier this year. So any change, any option to change based on the court's ruling has to be done by ordinance. And typically, an ordinance requires two readings separated by a public hearing, but there is a provision in state law and in the city's charter that allows emergency ordinance when those circumstances of emergency are set forth on the record, which they have been tonight because of the timing we have. Because without this ordinance, we would not be able to take advantage of a ruling that would in favor of the city and reschedule the hearing or have the election on August 20th, because we would not have time to have you adopt the ordinance in time for the 21st, which is the printing deadline for the Supervisor of Elections. So this is presented to you with the intent that we have the election. It's just provides the flexibility if the judge, if we get a ruling or we get a compromise somehow that we can get on August 20th, and it's allows the city administration, City Attorney, City Clerk to take those steps, because, for example, you do have an org, you have a contract that you approved with the supervisor for the November election date. We would need to amend that for August. We would not have time to come back to you for that, so we would want, that's part, that's part of the example that you have here to authorize that type of action, the renoting and to take whatever steps are necessary to implement it if the judge were to rule in our favor on Thursday.
Thank you. Any questions?
Me, Mayor.
Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. Goran, you and I had a conversation, and I wanted to put on record that you did not find any conflict with me, who is an interim commissioner, but also would be voting on this item, I'm a candidate for that election.
May I respond, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you. The statute that you referred me to today was, is in chapter 112. Chapter 112 is the statute governing in part three, by the way. It governs public officials, elected officials, it's essentially the Code of Ethics for public officials under state law. The statute that you referred to is section 112.3143, which is a voting conflict provision. Decisions about voting conflicts and abstention from voting are vested in the actual voter himself or herself. The decision is not mine to make, it's yours to make. The example of which is that under that statute, the statute specifically suggests that and requires that a public official shall abstain or should, should abstain from voting if the vote will injure to his or her special private gain or loss, special private gain or loss. And the decision as to whether or not that vote would injure to your special private gain or loss is one that you make, I can't make that for you. I will be very blunt about it, you asked me a question about another decision such as this, it occurred some months ago, when then Commissioner Castillo abstained from voting, he made a conscious decision to not vote with regard to the ordinance then before the Commission, which would have scheduled the qualifying period to be March 1 and March the 15th. And he did so because he, he would have potentially suffered a loss by virtue of that particular election, because he would not have otherwise been able to qualify had that qualifying period been, been in existence. He made the decision publicly to recuse himself, abstain from voting, which he did, and I gave you the same option today when we had that discussion.
Mr. City Attorney, however, the, the scenario here is now different.
It is, and to do-
So are you advising Commissioner Hernandez to recuse?
I'm not. I'm giving him the option to make that decision. We haven't, we have looked at the issue, and to the extent that we have looked at the issue, we do not see that there's an ethical conflict under 31.40-
So you did not find a conflict?
That's correct.
Commissioner Hernandez?
And the qualifying period is passed. We just closed a second qualifying period.
That is correct, and you will either be on the November ballot or you'll be on the August ballot. We don't know yet because the judge has yet to rule on the subject of the application of the motion for injunction. And, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, so the purpose of this ordinance is simply to provide the Commission with options that it can act upon depending on the ruling of the judge?
May I respond? Just, yeah, one, one sub-option that we did not discuss, but, but having now, you having raised it, this commission is meeting on a Tuesday night, public buildings are closed on Wednesday, the hearing on this matter is Thursday. It is theoretically possible for this commission to schedule a special commission meeting on Thursday or Friday, which would get us to the 21st, which would then enable you to know what the decision of the judge was in the event that the judge ordered there be an election in August, to enable you to consider that issue publicly at that time. We agree on that, correct?
Mr. Hernandez?
And I appreciate what Mr. Goran and his team have done. I just want to say, I sat in the audience when this discussion was taking place. I do want to repeat what I said publicly and in other meetings, that I appreciated very much, you weren't the Vice Mayor then, but you were Commissioner Good and Commissioner Castillo, being vocal on the qualifying period not being, after we had the discussion, that we had to put it in March or November, I appreciated that it's a November election. I wouldn't think that the district residents that I represent right now, that's 47,000 of them, would have been well represented with an election in March. I still think the Supervisor of Elections is wrong ethically and legally. A city should have the right to govern itself, to have its own charter, and to have it respected. And I appreciate, Mr. Goran, you and your team actually defending the city, going to court, because I think this is one very- court, because I think this is one very, very dangerous step. If there were a ruling that Pembroke Pines has to ignore its charter, which, I'm not an attorney, but based on what was discussed then, that's what we would be doing, ignoring our charter. Then 30 other cities in this county could have the same issue brought before them. So, based on your opinion, Mr. City Attorney, and based on the fact that because three of you voted for me to be an interim commissioner, and I represent 47,000 residents, about 100 of which sat here and felt very disrespected throughout that process, I do intend to vote on this. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on the item?
Mayor.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Mr. Cirillo.
Yes, Commissioner, good evening.
Good evening. You were a part of, you were in attendance for the meetings that we were discussing, March elections or August elections or November elections, you've been.
I recall being here.
Yeah, you've been leading, you've been leading the legal team with.
I would say leading.
Okay, well, no, you're leading, yes. So, I don't recall one time that the commission said that the supervisor was right, not allowing us to have the election in August. I think we've, I think we voted unanimously to sue him. At the same time, we also said that the election wasn't going to be in August, and we moved on from that, and we had a, we had an appointment process. We had a requi, you know, the qualifying period opened up, and even then, we said it wasn't going to be in August, it was going to be November. Mr. Cirillo, is the city under any obligation to notify those who've qualified of the legal proceedings that are happening on Thursday?
I don't believe we have a legal obligation, but it's public record, and we're discussing it here this evening, and it's been advertised, I mean, not advertised, but I don't know that we have a legal obligation to notify them individually, is that what you mean?
I'm just asking the question.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So, would a qualified candidate be able to find this case in Broward Clerk.com?
Yeah.
And how would they search that?
Well, they could, they could search up the city, they could search for Joe Scott as parties. Those are probably the simplest way to do it, is to look up Joe Scott as the supervisor of elections, which is defendant, they look up the City of Pembroke Pines, there's going to be quite a few of those, that's for Joe Scott.
Okay. And during this time period, Vice Mayor Good had mentioned, during the appointment process, that anyone who gets appointed may have an advantage over someone else. At what point do these, do these things become public? Because when we received.
What things?
Items about the hearing on Thursday, when it becomes public, for example, the city attorney's office sends us privileged information about cases. We typically have shade sessions, but in this case, we don't. The public would only know about the hearing and about our filed motions unless they knew what the case number was or that there would be, there would be a ruling from the judge. Is that correct, Mr. Cirillo?
Yeah, other than what we're discussing.
Right, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get to the point of transparency and availability for those who are qualified to be able to follow the bouncing ball. So, I don't know what the judge, I don't think any of us knows what the judge is going to decide to do. I don't know what the supervisor of elections is going to do depending on the outcome. But if the city attorney is asking for the majority of us to set a special meeting on Friday the 21st, I'm fine with that. If the ruling is not in the city's favor, then there's no need to meet, but if it is in the city's favor, then there is a need to meet to have the public know that there's a meeting and that there's going to be an election in August. I don't know any other way to be as open and transparent as that. Under our charter and ordinances, a special meeting can be called by the majority of the commission members, not the mayor. It has to be the majority, and it has to be done.
That's incorrect, that's incorrect.
And it has to be done at.
Sir, that's incorrect. Mayor can call a meeting, or the two or more commissioners can call a meeting under the chart.
That would be three commissioners, yes.
But the mayor can call a special meeting.
The mayor is considered a commissioner, yes.
No, the mayor's not a commissioner, the mayor's mayor. And the mayor can call a special meeting, or any two commissioners can ask for it.
Therefore, the, I think it'll be, I think it'll be in our best interest to set a special meeting. City Attorney, the 48-hour rule, we're well beyond Act of 72, can we set it for 10:00 AM on Friday?
Commissioner? We will set a special meeting at the time that council recommends it.
Well, I'm asking because we have a 48-hour rule that.
The special meetings don't follow into the 48-hour rule.
City Attorney, can you please read the charter?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, the issue of the 48-hour, 48-hour rule is not in the city charter, it's in the county charter. And the 48-hour rule basically provides for exceptions, one of which is emergencies.
Right.
And emergencies, City Attorney, is based on life and safety issues, correct, not elections?
The answer is that the city commission determined the basis for emergency, and that is how the commission can operate in the context of conducting its public business.
And if I, and if I am asked by a city attorney to call a special meeting, it will be because I determined that it's, that it's an emergency.
And if I may, Mayor, not to, just to bolster the information that's on the record, is under 30.1, 30.11, which is the city's code of ordinance, that the mayor, comma, or a majority of the commission members shall request in writing the calling of a special meeting. So there is authority for a majority of the commission, the mayor, or, it's an, it's an and, it's an and/or, it's not, it's not a requirement that be joined. But at the end of the day, we're not suggesting at the moment that you call a special meeting, we simply raise it as an issue, as a possibility. We don't know what the court's going to do on Thursday. What we do know is that this ordinance gives flexibility to the city manager, city attorney and city clerk to properly notice. And just to add information to the record, when I send this commission attorney-client work product, it's not just giving you a copy of the orders of the court or a notice of the hearing, which are all public record, it is providing you with legal information that would not be otherwise available to the public. But the attachments, those being the notices of hearing, motions, any legal documents, unequivocally are public records, and they're not being kept in the public, so they are legally accessible. What is not accessible is the exemption of Chapter 119, saying that if I give you some strategy in an email regarding a pending legal matter, I'm allowed to do that, unless challenged by another party or by the court. So I've done that, I've shared information with you as legally and as quickly as possible, because this is a fast-moving train. Unfortunately or fortunately, given the nature of elections, we don't get to set them, they're set by statute, they're set by the supervisor, they're set through a combination of efforts. And to that extent, actions that are taken to seek the declaration of your rights are expedited in the court's calendar, and that's what this judge did. He expedited it for his review.
And Mayor, this is my last request.
Okay.
The city attorney, can you, for the record, read 3011 in its entirety, it's only a few sentences, that were clear on the rights of the commission and the right to the public?
With the mayor's permission, if I may, 30.11 makes reference to special meetings. The mayor, comma, or a majority of the commission members shall request, comma, in writing, comma, the calling of special meetings of the commission whenever in his or her opinions the public business may require it. The request for a special meeting shall be served on or communicated by the city clerk or in his absence, the deputy city clerk, the official on whom the request for a special meeting has been served, and shall promptly cause the notice or call to be served on each member of the commission and the mayor, either in person or at their place of residence.
Anything else? Anything from the pub, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to kind of speak a little bit to Jay's point. I think one of the things that he mentioned is that, like, did we reach out to the candidates? As previous candidate, I was reading the agenda, that most of the agendas, I would attend the meetings, and so I think it is beholden of the qualified candidate to attend these meetings, and if they had anything to say regarding when, you know, this was, or like getting information about the case or what's been going on, I think that kind of lies on them, and the fact that, I mean, we, we do, sorry, we do publish all of this. And then, just for clarification, I think, and Mr. Goran, let me know if I'm wrong, from my conversations with you, I was under the understanding that if the court rules in our favor, we have the August election, and that was the whole basis for us.
Suing.
Suing.
Yes. May I respond quickly to the record?
Yes.
The answer is yes, the answer is that that was the complaint that we drafted, that we filed, was based upon seeking ballot, the ballot access or ballot options for the August election, August primary election.
So I guess if we were, my point being that we made the decision to sue for the August election. If it goes our way, great, the motion was to sue for the August election, and I don't think that, maybe we forgot about that portion, but I think it's like, it is complicated on behalf of the, of the residents to kind of see this flip-flop, but we did make that decision when we went about suing the SOE.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
No.
Yeah, so, the only pressing question I have is, so, we have a charter, and we have 180 days, and the supervisor of election took that away from us. We then created a resolution where we pushed it outside of our charter. So the question is, if we are successful, and this barrier is removed, we no longer have a justification for being outside of our charter, does that put us in a very difficult place?
City Attorney? That's, may I respond, Mr. Mayor, that's the nature of the question, the answer is you're trying to comply with your charter. You made every legitimate, public, good faith, due diligence effort to get to an answer consistent with the city charter. The problem is that this commission and this city does not control the actions of the supervisor of elections. He's a constitutional officer, and that's, and that's to your point, which is, you can only, you can only define your destiny as far as you can.
Well, I mean, the point is, is that, you know, us moving it to a November election, you know, I took comfort knowing that that was something out of our control, and so it seemed like we had some sort of protection that, that we were driven to have a November election. But if we win this case and that is taken away, we are no longer have that, that need, I guess, to exceed our charter limit of 180 days, and the question is, then, are we willfully then violating our charter by knowingly keeping it on November, knowing that we could have gotten it in August?
Are you, I'm sorry, Mike Cirillo, are you out?
That's the question.
If we don't take steps to move it to August, if we have the opportunity to take August, would that put us in potential, our job in violation of the charter by not doing every step we can to get it within 180 days? Is that the question?
Yeah, we are no longer, we no longer have a reason to go to November, seemingly.
Yeah, this ordinance is, is, will allow you to finish that path. If you're, you started it, you've asked for it, we've got the hearing, we have a judge who gave us the hearing, which, which was, you know, which was, which was very good, that we got a judge that was able to move so quickly. This ordinance would allow us that if we are successful on Thursday, which we do not know what the judge will do, I don't want to create the impression that we're going in there expecting, you know, a victory for the city, but we are going to put, we are going to have our day in court, and we're going to have the ability to have a judge make that decision, and this ordinance is necessary that if, so if the judge does make that decision in our favor, we can then take advantage of that and bring it back into August, which is within 180 days of the vacancy.
And complies with the charter.
Which, which is something that I'm very, very concerned about, because I don't want somebody to be able to challenge us later, and then we get into some sort of, another type of, of a dispute or litigation about us not following our charter when we could have. And that's, you can make that argument here, so, but I do want to say that I do, I do hear Commissioner Schwartz's, at least his concern about notification or transparency to the, to the other folks that are in it, because this is like a very fast-moving train. I don't see having a meeting, to be really honest with you, that would do anything different than what we're doing today, because, you know, trying to open us back up, it will then defer this and bring me back to my question again about us, if we are successful, going outside of our charter, willfully, because we delayed a decision. So, I'm, I'm in favor of this, but I am also in favor of somehow getting these other candidates notified. I just think that's fair.
I think, I think the ones the judge makes his, his decision, we could certainly email all of the candidates to explain to them, and council can write an email to the candidates just to inform you of, of the outcome of a, of a lawsuit that the, that the city filed in order to defend its charter, and here's the story, and here's the outcome.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to say that I appreciate what you said, Mr. Vice Mayor, and I agree with you that every candidate should be notified, every qualified candidate should be notified immediately, regardless of what the court decides.
Okay, anything else?
Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo. Mr. Cirillo is going to confirm that the City of Pembroke Pines charter says it has to be within 180 days. Our charter also says that we can call an election at any time. We were not, we're not beholden to the August date. 180 days from the date of vacancy, which I believe was April the 3rd, takes us all the way into October, not November, that's where the, that's where the foul would be, Vice Mayor Good. But there wasn't anything precluding this commission from having an election or asking for election in June, or in July.
But it didn't.
It did not, but what I'm saying is that there are, there are elections that cost more, when you have early voting, 10 days of early voting, and you have elections that don't have early voting at all. It's a lot cheaper for the city to conduct elections in districts 1 and 4 than they are in 2 and 3, because there's less cost, there's less exposure for the supervisor of election to have the staff polling and that sort of thing. So, we do have an imbalance when it comes to the financials. I want to move the question tonight, but if, if we could certainly hope for the best for Thursday, and make sure that our team has, has the right legal leads to convince the judge that we're right, is there any possibility, see, Mayor, I don't want to ask a question that would typically be a shade item, but we don't have the ability of shade.
Let's take it one step at a time and, and see what happens on, let's follow council's advice, and let's see what happens on Thursday. That's the best course right now. Anything else?
Yes, just a last consideration, if we could, because I'm sure the candidates have advertised that it's in November, I'm sure, you know, SOE has advertised, I think we need to put a little bit of special effort from our end, from the city, maybe putting out some publications that it has been changed, if it comes to that, really putting in the effort, because it's not normal for, obviously, we have elections and we have school board races and judicial races, but kind of putting a special effort, because we have been a little bit flip-flopping due to the circumstances, but putting that forward so we can actually communicate to our residents and let them know that that was a change that occurred.
Without objection.
A question for the city attorney on that?
This, this will have to be the last question, we've got to move on.
It's a legal one. So I know that the city can educate but not advocate, is there anything preventing the city from expending postage and paper to mail, to, to all registered households of the August election?
Mr. Mayor, we issued an opinion some months ago under the changes that occurred in Chapter 116. Mr. Mayor, uh, we issued an opinion some months ago under the changes that occurred in chapter one sixteen, one, uh, um. We know what it wanted to do. Well, yeah, you know, in chapter one oh six, actually, and the legislature really constricted local government's ability to do virtually anything, quite frankly. And I, I must confess to you, although I like the, the question you've asked, I'd like to answer it yes. But I know that in my heart of hearts, if I gave you the opinion to do so, I, I, we would be highly scrutinized by the courts for doing so. I think it's not inappropriate to post it on your website and to in, in, informationalize as much as you can. But once you begin to spend public dollars, and again, I, I can't let my personal views prevail over the legal answers. And legal answers, I would, I'd recommend against illegality.
Would, would the supervisor of election be prohibited to notifying all electors about the Pines, uh, potential, potential Pines, August election?
That's, that's a request that could be made, that could be made of supervisor in the event that the city is successful and the cooperation that we would expect from him could, could then follow.
So please consider that as a part of your pleadings to the court to force the supervisor of election to do their job and spend those dollars in the appropriate way.
Understood.
So that all electorates know that there's, that, that there may be an, if, if there's an August election, the supervisor elections needs to put his pen in his pocket to notify, pay for it, and show us proof that it goes out no later than the end of this month. It cannot happen in July. It cannot happen the beginning of August. Voters need to know as soon as possible. We can do our part, but the supervisor is going to have to do his.
Thank you. Anything else? Anything from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor.
I, 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 I'm going to call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo, um, Mayor Castillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Thank you.
And for the record, Mayor Commission, the permanent number for this emergency ordinance adopted under chapter one sixty-six of the Florida statutes, as well as the city's charter and code is number two zero two three. Thank you, Mayor Commission.
Thank you very much. Item forty-two, first reading ordinance.
Let me read, Mr. Mayor. Item forty-two is the motion to pass proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fourteen on first reading. It's a proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-four fourteen is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida. Amending chapter one fifty-two of the city's code of ordinance is entitled flood damage protection. Uh, specifically amending section one fifty-two point zero one zero, providing an update to the effective date of flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps, providing for codification, providing for conflict severability, finally providing for effective date. Item number forty-two, twenty twenty-four zero fourteen on the floor of consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Who have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by the vice mayor. It's your second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion?
Quickly.
Yes.
The, the public is outraged by this, uh, this newfound color map. Uh, we literally have neighborhoods, uh, paying more if they live on one side of the street versus the other. It is, it is atrocious. This is not a flood map. This is, um, actuarial insurance funding is what this is. And it's disgraceful. It's absolutely disgraceful. And I encourage, uh, federal elected officials to do something about it. Uh, there is absolutely no reason why one part of our city that has an elevation of nine feet is anywhere different from three blocks away, still at the same nine feet. Uh, Vice Mayor Good knows extremely well how water moves. And, um, certainly, uh, the drainage districts are doing their part, but the federal government has failed us.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So I, I, I'd like to ask, I know that, uh, when these maps first came out, that, um, there was a challenge by the city. Can we get an update on what happened with that challenge? Just to dodge.
Um, Mr. Kennedy is here to respond. Good evening, Carl Kennedy, City Engineer. Um, yes, I, I submitted a challenge to FEMA, uh, challenging their modeling, uh, that was done to create the new maps. Uh, and I had submitted the two to three, uh, additional batches of data, uh, to, uh, to prove, to prove my point that the modeling was incorrect. Um, however, uh, the last two batches of data, they deemed that weren't valid because they were sent outside the ninety degree, uh, the ninety day, uh, uh, challenge period. Um, so they, uh, deemed that, uh, my response was invalid. And if they, they, uh, did not feel that I approved scientifically that theirs was, was, was not valid.
Imagine that. So does that mean that there is no other option for us at this point to reach back to them? And, um, you know, have these maps changed for the city?
Uh, we can do in, uh, individual, uh, look Mars. Basically is what they said. So we can, we can, uh, go in and if we have the, the scientific proof, we can, we, we can move certain areas out of the flood zone.
FEMA is part of what department? Is it Homeland Security? Yeah. Well, I mean, under the statute, the, the secretary may have the ability to waive, uh, certain deadlines. Uh, the director may have the ability to waive certain deadlines. You might want to ask, uh, for waiver, uh, to allow our data to be reconsidered, even though it was submitted late, which certainly wasn't our fault. Uh, we were doing what we had to do and, and, and time did not allow us to respond. But we could certainly ask for a waiver.
Yeah.
In light of, in light of the plain incorrectness of their assessment.
Yeah, I, I reached out to our, our senators and our, our representatives, uh, are requesting their assistance with, uh, uh, FEMA and, uh, they all received basically the same response. No.
So I guess the next step, if any, would be to, uh, explore asking for a waiver and a reconsideration of our data, as if it was submitted timely. And I, I would imagine, should discuss that with the city attorney. But, um, usually secretaries can waive, uh, regulations. They can't waive statutes, but they can waive regulations.
Yeah, there, well, there's, um, uh, most of the FEMA regulations are in the, in the, um, uh, in the, in the statutes. Uh, there is interpretation by FEMA about the, uh, th- there is a, the statute says that you, you know, you can't submit data outside a certain timeframe. Uh, and FEMA has interpreted that as a ninety days. Um, uh, I, I, I've set my analysis of it, which, which I said we could, but they said that I couldn't.
Mr. Mayor, one other question real quick. So you mentioned that the other way of moving these out were LOMARS? Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's what they, they said. You can always come back in and do that.
And that's each, so each individual homeowner would have to commit or?
Yeah, I, I don't know if I could, uh, yeah.
Yeah. Each parcel.
Yeah, I would, uh, I, I would expect that we, we can do portions of communities, um, if, if we have the modeling that we can, you know.
But we probably.
We have modeling.
Yeah. Check that out. I mean, you're saying that you could do whole communities.
Well, I, I don't know. I'm just.
Committing a LOMAR for group of, or community?
Yeah.
Not just a single family.
I don't know the exact, exact procedure for, for that, that they just, they just mentioned that.
You can, you, you could certainly do that. Uh, I don't want to speak out of term, but you know, my, uh, if you live in South Florida and, um, uh, you don't get flood insurance, uh, that's highly questionable whether or not you, what, no matter what color on that map your house falls into. It's, uh, it's a precaution that is necessary, especially given what we were through last week. And I just want to take a moment to commend staff, city manager. Your staff were amazing during, uh, their emergency and, uh, fire department, public works, the engineering folks, the police department. Everybody came together as a team and you did great, great work. But, uh, homeowners, uh, in, in our area, uh, should be, it, it should be recommended. And we've done that from the day of the year. Buy, uh, uh, flood insurance. It's a, it's a, it's a couple of bucks more. It's unfortunate, but, um, uh, it's a, uh, it's a, it's a precaution well taken. And, uh, frankly, if, uh, if your, if your house has a mortgage, whether you fall into that math or not, your, uh, your mortgage company is going to require it. So this, this really could, the choice really only falls to people who own their own homes. Because if they're financing their homes, their, uh, their lender is going to require it, whether they fall into that or not. That's just the way it is.
And if you have citizens now, everybody who's has citizens will be required to have it.
They don't, they don't, they don't care about the map. They want you to have flood insurance. And, um, um, so a lot of this is, is really move.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, it's.
Yes, sir.
It, it, uh, you're, you're, you're correct in, in, in the philosophy of what you speak to. But when you come to the dollars and cents, if, if you don't have to get, if you're in an X zone, which means that you do not have to get flood insurance.
Hundred and fifty bucks.
You could still get flood insurance and you get what they call a preferred rate, which is substantially less.
Yep.
Than if you were in like an AR or some other required flood. So the value for me is, is I agree with you. You should have flood insurance. But if there's an opportunity to have a, a substantial cost reduction in having that flood insurance, you should be looking at.
I don't disagree with that. And that's why I'm suggesting the waiver because, um, um, the, the ability to get every parcel, you're, you're not going to get every parcel. And so, um, uh, no matter how hard we try, we could put a thousand people on the street and you're still going to have parcels missing. Folks out of town, folks not paying attention, what have you. So, uh, I think that if you want to press your issue, you have to ask for a waiver of the, of the deadline.
Mayor.
Other discussion? Yes.
On, on July first, people are going to get crushed with their escrow payment. It's not a couple bucks. It's a few hundred, if not thousands of dollars that people are going to have to spend in flood insurance because their next door neighbor has an X zone, not an AR zone. Literally, the guy next door is going to be paying hundreds of dollars less. People are getting crushed, uh, with, with hurricane insurance.
Yep.
It, it is, um, it, it is, it is.
Horrible.
It is a horrendous situation. Mr. Kennedy, thank you so much, uh, for your, for your work. Uh, shame on the federal government for actually looking at days of the month when they can stop doing their job. If you, if, if, if we could through the city manager, can we post, uh, Mr. Kennedy's work product on, uh, the city's website and it's searchable by address? So that anyone who wishes to, um, um, uh, I, I guess, object or, or ask for the federal government to reconsider that we've done our part. The information is there. All they have to do is boilerplate, cut and paste from what Mr. Kennedy has already done for us.
We certainly can look at that. I don't know what detail he would have that we could post, but we'll certainly.
Anything you do be great because come July one, people are going to get hammered.
There, there's another item on the agenda tonight too, for the public, uh, uh, information for, uh, publicizing flood insurance in the, in the community.
Thank you. Anything from the public on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Commission, for the record, that item will be heard in second and final reading as a public hearing on August the seventh in these very chambers.
Thank you. Resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. Forty-three is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-four R sixteen, which is a resolution of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, authorizing the mayor, the vice mayor, the city manager, the city clerk and the finance director to sign vouchers and checks, to make deposits and withdrawals and to authorize transactions on investments pursuant to the city's investment policy ordinance and as provided for by law, provided for conflict severability, provided for an effective date. Item forty-three on the floor, Mayor Commission, forty-three.
Is there a motion? Motion by the vice mayor, second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Is there any other discussion on this? Seeing none, any from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill carries unanimously.
The record, Mayor Commission, permanent number is number thirty-eight sixty-six. Next up is forty-four.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. Forty-four is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-four R eighteen, which is also a, you know, an ordinance, the, pardon me, resolution of the city commission of Pembroke Pines, Florida, endorsing the recommendations of the Pembroke Road Protected Shared Use Path Concept and supporting the efforts of the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organizations, that's the NPO, to prepare the recommended capital improvements for federal funding, providing for conflict severability, providing for effective date. Item forty-four on the floor.
Uh, is there a motion?
Motion.
Uh, moved by Commissioner Rodriguez, second by vice, uh, by, uh, Commissioner Hernandez. Uh, any discussion?
Um, yes. Um, I just wanted to kind of state how good of a project this is because it really changes our concept, at least in this part of the city, of viewing, uh, cyclists and pedestrian safety a lot more. Because of that physical separation of the bollards, I think, um, we need to, and, and I know that there's plans to do this, but simply highlight that that physical separation is needed in a lot of other places. Sometimes we consider simply putting green paint down as, um, a bike lane when that usually isn't the safest option. Um, and so moving forward, I would like our roads to look a lot more like this project here, um, than some of the older roads that we have.
Thank you. Any other discussion on, on item forty-four?
So I just, real quick, I just. I'm, I'm, I'm noticing that this, uh, the protected is, is this just, uh, protected meaning separation from the travelings? Or is it literally like with some sort of, uh, raised, uh, concrete or some other median type of, uh, separation?
Mr. Dodge.
Mr. Kenny will address, but it is a separation. I don't know about the elevation.
Uh, good evening, Carl Kennedy, City Engineer. The, uh, uh, there's basically two sections of the, of the roadway east. One's east and one's west and, and they will have different types of, of, of separations. Uh, uh, there's one portion which is on the roadway, uh, adjacent to the traffic, similar to, uh, traditional bike lanes, but the majority of the bike lanes will be, uh, adjacent to the sidewalk off the roadway on the back of the curb.
Meaning that it's separated by a curb or is it?
Yeah, they're separate, they're separated by a curb. It's almost like a multi-use path, but, um, a portion will be multi-use path, a portion will be a sidewalk, uh, next to, uh, a bike lane. Uh, and it'll be separated by a, um, a tactile barrier between the, between the walkers and the bi- and the bicyclists. Um, so those are the three types of, uh, of, uh, paths we'll have.
As, as inside, um, this. As inside, Mr. Uh, Mr. City Manager, if you could, uh, had a meeting in August, prepare an item on, uh, regular agenda, comprehensive item listing all of the proposed or currently funded road projects regardless of funding source, so that this commission can review each and every one of them. Uh, and, uh, um, be where we stand on each of those. If you could put that together, I'd appreciate it. So that's all of them, uh, whether it's county funded, whether it's certex, whether it's this, NPO, that, federal funds, state funds, uh, 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 city projects, whatever it is. Let's just make a, a, a spreadsheet laying them all out and what the status of them are. Any, uh, schedules for completion, anything along those lines. Make it as comprehensive as possible so that we can take a look at that all on one item. I appreciate that. Anything further on item forty-four? Okay, all those, uh, anything from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number forty-five.
Pardon me, Mayor Commission, the permanent number for the record is number thirty-eight sixty-seven.
Thank you. Forty-five.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. Forty-five is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-four R nineteen, which is also a resolution of the city commission of the city Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving and adopting the program for public information, that's PPI document, which includes the flood insurance coverage improvement plan and providing for conflict severability and providing for an effective date. Item number forty-five on the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion by the vice mayor. Is there a second? Second by, second by Commissioner Hernandez. There's discussion on this item. Hearing none. Anything from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously.
The record, Mayor Commission, permanent number is thirty-eight sixty-eight. Next up, forty-six.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Commission, with your permission. This is proposed resolution number twenty twenty-four R twenty-two, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city Pembroke Pines, Florida, adopting the budget for the Pembroke Pines, Florida State University Charter Elementary School for the charter school fiscal year beginning on July one, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of ten million, two fifty-eight, one fifty-three flat, providing for conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Item forty-six on the floor for consideration.
Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Schwartz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hernandez. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, city manager Dodge, um, I love our principals. I love spending all the time in the world with them. But the second meeting of June. but the second meeting of June every year, they're always at the bottom of the agenda. I'm happy to support all the items tonight, but if we can put them at the front of the agenda, next year, that'll be fantastic.
Is there any reason why this item can't be on consent?
It's a resolution. I don't believe it can. It can have the city attorney correct. It needs to be on the regular agenda.
We can certainly move on.
Well, next year, next year, uh, I'm sure the principal will ask me to pull the item far, which I will only be too happy to do. Because just to teach, if, if you don't speak up, nothing happens. And we love you, we love you all very much and congratulations on your budget. Anything further on this item? And thank you, Commissioner Schwartz, for that recommendation. Anything further? Any from, anything from the public? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously.
Permanent number is number thirty-eight sixty-nine, Mayor Commission. Next up is forty-seven.
Yes, sir.
Thank you with your permission, Mayor Commission. Forty-seven is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2024 R-21, which is still a resolution of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, adopting the budget for the City Pembroke Pines Charter School sponsored by the School Board of Broward County, Florida, for the Charter School fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2024, in the amount of seventy million, seven fifty, four seventy-nine flat, providing for conflict severability, providing for an effective date, forty-seven on the floor, Mayor.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hernandez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion? Seeing none, any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The record, thirty-eight seventy is the permit number for the clerk and for the public, and next up is forty-eight, Mayor.
Number forty-eight, please.
With your permission, Mayor, thank you. This is the motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2024 R-22, the resolution of the City Commission of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, authorizing and directing the signing and submission of a grant application and supporting documents and assurances to the Florida Department of Transportation, better known as the FDOT, and the acceptance of a grant award from the DOT and the purchase of vehicles and equipment and expenditures of grant funds, directing the appropriate city officials to take any and all action necessary to effectively obtain the resolution, providing for conflict severability, providing for an effective date, item forty-eight on the floor. Thank you, Mayor, forty-eight.
Any, any, any motion on this item? Is there a motion on this item?
I'll, I'll motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. This is a wonderful item, as I understand it, we're getting electric buses, is that correct?
Those are for our school buses. We did receive a grant and we're working on that. Uh, so about half of our fleet will be electric.
Wow.
Does that lower the cost of the administrator?
I'm sorry, Commissioner?
Does that lower the cost for the administrator that we just gave a one-year deal to?
No, because the administration of it is different than the cost. You, you're substituting electric for gas and maintenance and everything.
Right, we don't have the maintenance cost, so it should be less to look at.
No, I don't think so, sir.
They have warranty at least for the first five years. Thirty-six thousand miles, I'm just saying, we should take a look.
Okay. Anything else on this item? Anything from the public? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Number thirty-eight seventy-one is the number. Next up, forty-nine, Mayor Commission, Mayor.
Forty-nine.
Thank you.
Mayor, we don't have Commissioner Vice Mayor.
Yes, we're going to take a two-minute recess.
Just, just on the last item, I, I would like to have him, you know, weigh in on that. What are we doing?
Okay, we'll resume the meeting now. Vice Mayor, did you want to vote on item uh, forty-eight, the, the grant? I know you heard it in the back. Vice Mayor votes, uh, Clark, please uh, record that Vice Mayor votes aye on item forty-eight. Um, excuse me, forty, was that forty-eight? Yes, forty-eight. Item forty-nine?
Thank you, Mayor Commission, for the record. Forty-nine is a proposed resolution twenty-four R-23, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, authorizing and directing the signing and submission of a grant application, supporting grant documents and assurances to the Florida Department of Transportation, the FDOT, and the acceptance of a grant award for the FDOT and the purchase of vehicles and equipment and expenditures of grant funds, directing the appropriate city officials to take any and all action necessary to effectively obtain the resolution, providing for conflicts, severability, and providing for an effective date.
Is there, is there a motion? Motion made by the vice mayor, seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion? Hearing none, any from the public, seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
For the record, Mayor, item, for the record, the resolution for number forty-eight, final permanent number was twenty twenty-four and for forty-nine, excuse me, I'm sorry, thirty-eight sixty-seven, and for forty-nine was thirty-eight sixty-eight.
Thank you very much. Regular agenda, item fifty is the discussion and possible action for the City Commission to designate a voting delegate to the Florida uh, League of Cities Annual Conference in Hollywood, Florida on August fifteenth through seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. And I, and I inquired of the city manager and he didn't have a chance to get back to me, but I had thought that we appointed uh, Commissioner Rodriguez to do this.
Correct.
So what, what, what more is needed on this item?
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Normally each year they ask us who's going to be the voting members who are in attendance, and I think that's what the issue is here.
Commissioner, you're going to be in attendance?
Yeah.
She's going to be in attendance. Anything further on this item? Sir?
No.
We, we can move on without vote? We don't need a vote?
I don't believe so, if that's your intent.
Now, item fifty-one, discussion of possible action to appoint one member to the Police and Fire Pension Board for a two-year term expiring in twenty twenty-five, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to uh, appoint Rafael Barrero.
Rafael Barrero has been nominated to fill the seat. Is there a second?
Which one are we on?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Uh, we have uh, Mr. Aronson in attendance. I'd like to have him come down to the podium.
Okay.
Evening.
Good evening, Mr. Aronson.
Mr. Aronson, hi.
Most of us know who you are, but please state for the record uh, your name and address for the record.
My name is Gary Aronson. My address is six zero zero one North Ocean Drive, apartment eight oh three in Hollywood, Florida.
Uh, Mr. Aronson, thank you so much for your dedicated service. How many years have you been a uh, member of the Fire and Police Pension Board?
Thirty-eight years. It was nineteen eighty-six.
Thirty-eight years. You know a lot of information about this fund, don't you?
Very much so. It started with me when, before it was actually, it was the banker's life. And uh, we took it over and I was part of that with the takeover, pulling it back into the city. And then we started with six hundred thousand dollars and now we're close to a billion.
Uh, Mr. Aronson, um, would you say you're the most senior uh, knowledgeable encyclopedia in Google of the pension board? I'm sure you're the, like, you're.
Oh, or the senior statesman. Um, no, I, it's very important the, to have education. We go to a lot of conferences to keep us up to date on what's going on. Um, I attend them all. In fact, my attendants, uh, we have the option of, if you miss a meeting, to have an excused absence. I don't think I've uh, used it a lot. I've always attended meetings and, and when I mean out of town, I call in. Uh, because it's very important, uh, it's a very difficult process to go through, to understand. You really need the background and the education for it.
In the last three years, including COVID, there's been like thirty-six meetings. You meet once a month, right?
Correct.
You've had two absences in three years. I want to thank you for that.
Oh, okay.
City, city attorney, where did he go? Uh, city attorney, is there any residency requirement? Uh, your office was supposed to provide uh, thirty-four point something in the backup with respect to um, uh, who can serve. It's a state statute and we married the state statute.
The short, may I respond, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The, the short answer is there is no residency requirement. The statute that you're referring to is in chapter one seventy-five. Um, you're also referring to the code section specifically uh, with regard to the appointment process that you described. Uh, we reviewed the, the code. We also reviewed the statute. It's thirty-four point fifty-six. Under Board Established Powers and Duties, there's an exemption which was applicable to the city because of when this particular code was adopted, and the end result is, is that um, section one seventy-five point oh sixty-one one B does not apply. And a local plan and a supplemental plan shall continue to be administered by a board or boards of trustees numbered, constituted, and selected as the Board of Boards were numbered, constituted, and selected on December one, uh, year two thousand, which we qualify our city code. The answer is no.
The last question from Mr. Aronson, then you can have a seat. What's the current uh, fund balance of the pension?
Fund balance?
How many millions of dollars?
Nine hu, well, we're about nine hundred and eighty million.
Almost a billion dollars. Thank you so much. That's it, sir. Is Mr. Barrero in attendance tonight? Um, one of the things that we've been struggling with is attendance and quorum. Uh, in the Monday memo, uh, that was prepared by administration, uh, we have um, attendance records over the same period as Mr. Aronson. And um, it falls woefully short that even Commissioner Hernandez's comments back on the fifteenth of May, uh, as far as the percentage to um, to appoint, so I can't, I can't support the motion uh, to appoint Mr. Barrero. Uh, I'm going to offer a substitute motion to appoint uh, Mr. Aronson.
A substitute motion um, uh, is self-defeating because then the uh, the maker of the motion would simply restate their motion and uh, uh, the second substitute motion would have to be voted on. So, but you can offer a friendly amendment.
I, I'm going to offer the uh, and, and with, with respect to the chair, I'm going to offer the substitute motion, given the uh, the facts and testimony, uh, I can't ask Mr. Barrero any questions about the fund. Um, I have not had any communication with the applicant.
Do you have a right to offer a substitute motion? Is there, is there a second to the substitute motion?
Is the substitute motion to?
To appoint Mr. Aronson.
To appoint Mr. Aronson.
There's a second.
There's a second to appoint Mr. Aronson as substitute motion. So uh, uh, the first vote will be uh, the substitute motion to appoint uh, Mr. Aronson.
That is legally correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, um, is there any further discussion to, on motion?
Yes, so um, I just um, I, I, Mr. Aronson?
Yeah, sir.
I thank you for thirty-eight years of service. I know that you uh, are very, very familiar with uh, with uh, this group of people that you're with and things like that. And, and I thank you for continuing to want to serve. When is the last time that you lived in the city of Pembroke Pines? When's the last time you lived in the city of Pembroke Pines? Was the last time you were a resident of Pembroke?
Yeah, I was going to give you history. I uh, lived in Westview. I moved out about thirty years ago, okay? My office was located in Pembroke Pines. I used to be, I rented from the city at the old city hall, at one hundred and fourth and Taff. Okay, then the city decided to uh, tear down the structure, okay, and I was forced to move. I was in Cooper City, right around the corner, but um, I've been, I've been out of the city for a long time.
So how long ago was that, that your business, the last time you had a business or that you were doing your business in the city of Pembroke Pines? How long, I don't know how long.
Whenever you tore down the city, the old city hall.
Okay. Let's ask, let's ask the guy who knows the most about that, Mr. Manager. How long ago was that?
Thirty years. Gosh. It's, it's been a while, a while.
Okay, so thirty years and, or twenty-eight years, so, so twenty-eight years about the last time you really had any real involvement with Pembroke Pines, other than being on the pension board?
Other, yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right, because you know, this is a, this is a citizen's uh, appointment from the commission. And I actually think that we probably should be looking at our own, our own ordinances and make this a residency requirement because the citizen's appointment is representing the city. They live here in the city and they have a vested interest.
Point of clarification?
Point of clarification?
Again, I'm disappointed. I asked for the city attorney to include the statute with respect to fire and police pension in the backup. That didn't happen. Let me be crystal clear about this. This is not the typical board. We are, we are, uh, we are bound by state statute. The state statute has no uh, residency requirement uh, with respect to uh, those appointed uh, on the board.
Well, but the, the state statute doesn't require you, doesn't, doesn't eliminate you from picking someone who doesn't live within the city. That doesn't mean that we can't.
So I um, again, just want to uh, extend my concern about having somebody in the city who is qualified to be able to uh, you know, sit on the pension board. I think that anybody who lives here has, has an interest at heart, just as much as Mr. Aronson has over thirty-eight years. I would just feel better if it was somebody within the city that uh, would represent.
Hold on, hold on. All the people want to speak. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Um, thank you so much for the service that you have put in. Thank you so much for the service that you have put into this board. I, I understand what Vice Mayor Good is saying. I think we should reanalyze maybe putting in that um, that aspect in of residency into the qualification. However, maybe until we do that, we continue with his service. Um, mostly because I did look at the memo and see um, that although Mr. Barrero's um, qualifications and part of his resume and his application do uh, look in, fitting for this role, I do see a lot of absences and a resignation as early as August of twenty twenty-three. And although we would prefer to have someone within the city, I think it also makes sense to maybe amend it, go out, look for somebody, but in the meantime, continue to um, have his service.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and, and thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez. Um, you know, Mr. Barrero has been my appointee and um, you know, I'm not at liberty to share, you know, all of his personal elements. But I can tell you though, that he is uh, you know, he's a father, you know, he's got children, new children. And any of us who've had children, when you start off with children, you have children, children things. And so uh, some of these uh, tendence issues are not by choice. Uh, they're, they were by necessity. So um, he did the right thing by stepping aside to allow others to perform, but he is now uh, in a place where he has consistency. And I think that we should give him that opportunity, recognizing that he does represent a lot of what this city is.
Uh, Miss.
Can, sorry, I just have a quick clarification. Can we understand if these absences are excused or unexcused? We, we don't know what they are, right?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Uh, one point and, and to piggyback on what the vice mayor's uh, points have been, and I certainly appreciate your service. I, I just want to state on the record, I know Mr. Barrero, uh, I served with him on uh, Commissioner, then Commissioner Castillo's uh, District Four Budget Council. I also won't go into detail about the personal situation, uh, but he did make very clear that it was basically humanly impossible to attend certain meetings uh, due to his commitment to his newborn baby at the time and his, and his spouse. So I, I would say that, and he is a, a, a very qualified individual, uh, somebody who uh, has the best interests of the city at heart. So I did want to put that on the record because I did serve with him for some time.
Vice Mayor, did you want, you, you have the right to re, re, uh, reassert your original law?
So can I, is it a reassert or I make a substitute motion to make a substitute motion for the appointment of Rafael Barrero?
A second substitute motion has been made to appoint Rafael Barrero. Is there a second?
Second.
And that's seconded. So we, we need to vote first on the second substitute motion. Any further discussion? Any from the public? All those in favor of the substitute motion, please signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No.
Thank you. Mr. Barrero, Mr. Barrero was appointed. I want to thank you as well, Mr. Aronson. I remember when you were, you were the first uh, uh, campaign, deputy campaign treasurer for me when I first ran in two thousand and four. You did a wonderful job then. You've done a wonderful job since, and we want to thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item is.
Sorry.
Yes.
Can we look into that?
Yes, we will. Yes, we will. Mr. City Attorney, if we can look at um, um, the um, uh, the provision and whether, and, and whether, if you can memo us on what options there are. and whether, and, and whether, if you could memo us on what options there are to, to put in a preference for, for Pembroke Pines residents when we appoint to this commission. Thank you very much.
Be happy to.
And, and we'll look at that. That'll be at, at our discretion. We'll, we'll take a look at that.
Mayor, Mayor, this is the clerk. If I could clarify, if there were more than one no vote?
Yes, there were two no votes. Commissioner Schwartz voted no, Commissioner Rodriguez voted no, and the rest voted yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we are on reports of the league representatives. Commissioner Schwartz, do you have anything?
General meeting Thursday.
Okay, and Commissioner Rodriguez, do you have anything?
Not yet.
I just want to say, it, it doesn't fall under the league, but I will be traveling to Kansas City tomorrow to attend my first U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting. It will be a short trip. I'm there essentially for the new mayor's orientation, and I will be on a plane back on Thursday. So it'll be a very, very short trip. But I thought it was important to, to go to Kansas City and, and begin my work with, with that committee. Reports of the city manager.
No items, Mayor.
Reports of the city attorney.
No items, Mayor. Thank you.
Commission items. Commissioner Schwartz.
Discussion of possible actions to provide the public an opportunity to inquire about budget and financial-related issues through our finance director, Lisa Chong. At the second commission meeting after the close of each fiscal quarter, the finance director would be on the dais at the beginning of those meetings to answer or gather questions from the public on city financial matters. The finance director would advise the commission of any inquiry during the previous quarter through the creation of an email account named budget@pepines.com and a, and brief the public on city financial statements at the finance director's discretion. At the last meeting, I had inquired with our finance director, hence the reason why I actually keep, Ms. Chong, actually, launch from on down. I want to speak for you. You've been at this for too long. But I asked, what, what would make the most sense? And it'll be the second meeting of, at the end of each quarter. Ms. Chong, is, thank you, I guess, for the record, who you are.
Good evening. Lisa Chong, Assistant City Manager and Finance Director.
You and your staff do a tremendous job answering questions, right? So the financial statements that are prepared and posted, readily available on the website, you wouldn't have any issues having members of the public come up for a few minutes, second meeting after the quarter.
I do serve at the, the commissions, which you all want. They, that's what I will do. But that's fine. We do post all the financials in detail, as well as summary, every month on the financials. We haven't had any inquiries that I know of that have not been addressed or that needed to be public, but I will do whatever we need to all desire.
Okay, so that'll be my motion.
Is there a second to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is a possible action, a second.
I'm sorry, there was, there was mic interference.
I was going to say, I, maybe I don't know how to go about this. I don't, I think you're present enough to be asked a question rather at whatever point in time because we do the postings online and we have that transparency and you're here at every meeting. However, I do think it's a great idea to have that budget@pepines email just for ease of communication. So am I able to amend the motion to just take that part? I don't know really how the.
You can.
You can.
Okay. I will amend to only have the part of the email.
Okay. Is Commissioner Schwartz, are you acceptable?
Yeah.
You got the email that if anyone has a question of the budget?
Yeah.
Hold on, let me finish.
Yeah.
That if anyone has a question about the budget, there'll be an email provided for them to ask their question.
As long as the commission is copied on the response, I think accomplishes the same thing.
I don't have a problem with that. Is, is that your motion, Nancy?
Yeah, I mean.
Your motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion?
Just clarification. So, so this is, this is reduced down to just having an email.
Right.
Is that right?
Well, yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
Yeah. So, so you know how like at the beginning of the meeting, we have, you know, items at the request of the public? I just figured since the, since the financials are done, there'll be an opportunity, I guess, maybe to put the finance director on standby to be able to answer this question, to receive those questions. But the budget@pepines.com is going to give us a, a, a constant communication with our residents who may have questions throughout the year. Certainly, you know, we have really smart people who ask questions, and I think it just will behoove us to have those answers from the finance director just to be made public.
That's fine. I'm good. Any, any, anything further on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Anything on old business or new business?
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
And, and to the city manager. So we had a, we had, had a conversation about five weeks ago or so, and we were talking about capital projects and having, you know, signage put up, letting the public know that capital projects are about ready to come. And we were specifically talking about that.
Traffic lane?
So five weeks later, we still don't have anything there. I mean, this is, I don't know what's the difficulty in putting up signage that says capital projects coming and, you know, all those things that we had talked about, so.
Commissioner, I thought we were going to wait until such time as we started the construction.
No, no, no. No, it was, this was talked about having it done in advance so they would know that it's coming. This is like an identifier because this, this is going to interrupt that entire area.
We'll, we'll, we'll take care of it.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else? I want to thank you, but.
Sorry.
Yes.
I'm coming in like, for the road closure between, on one seventy-second, like.
Pembroke Road?
Pembroke Road. That is, is that a Pines project?
No, it's a Miramar project.
It's a Miramar project.
But it's been posted.
Can we advise them to also put posts, like the same kind of posting if, if it's not up already?
Well, we, we, we post, you're saying if, if Miramar can post it on their, on their social media?
Um, no, like the signage.
Oh, yeah.
I don't, I don't know if there is any at the moment.
They, they did a public post regarding the closure of the road due to them putting some additional gray water lines in. That's, actually, it's an improvement project that they needed to do.
No, she's, she's, she's referring to if Miramar can alert their people.
And may I, may I offer something a little bit more?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. With a physical sign.
Maybe. May I offer?
Yes.
Yes, for a moment, because they have what they call message board, traffic message boards, you know, when you drive by and they're all orange and you light up, and they could put those out in advance, putting people on notice on certain dates that the traffic is going to start, the road's going to close.
Obviously, it's Miramar, but it does impact our residents because we're moving in that direction to, if we're not doing it because it's not our project, if we can push them to do that.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, like a week in advance.
Would you please ask the city attorney in, in Miramar if you wouldn't be so kind as to do that? I think it's a great suggestion to keep everyone posted that, but as I understand it, westbound traffic is not going to be affected, but eastbound traffic, it will be detoured. And that's, that's, that's greatly appreciated. Thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez, for that. Yeah. Yes, sir.
I know I got a.
Yeah, if you could, if, if you could just ask the city attorney if they could, if they could put up signage to let their folks know as well. Okay, we have a, an executive session upstairs, and I want to thank everyone for their attendance. The meeting is adjourned.